Good morning. I now call the January 26, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00, well, 9:10 a.m. Please silence your electronic device and remove hats to avoid disturbance of others. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
One moment, Chair Cummings. You get a copy of that from him. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the school board clerk. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the clerk will call the speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. Thank you, Chair Cummings.
Thank you. Before we open up in the work session with the Neola Policy Review, Mr. Browning had a question. Mr. Powers, I'm going to let him pose that question to you concerning consent agenda.
Oh, all right. My question is this. This pertains to the last couple, last two Board meetings and the consent agenda. When the consent agenda comes up, I have attempted to have discussion. Last night, for example, when it was brought forward, the, under Robert's Rules, the chair asked for a motion. Motion was given, I believe, by Ms. Campbell. Asked for a second, I seconded for discussion. That was passed over again. I mentioned it then on the next item, but it's very, very difficult to operate when Robert's Rules are not followed. And apparently, they've never, there's a precedent for them never being followed with a consent item, which is exactly the issue that I have. It does not have consent. And so, it gets immediate call for vote. Vote happens, bang, and it goes to the next item. And that was the crux of an earlier comment that we must follow Robert's Rules. I'm trying to follow them, but it's stopping me in a place that is, it's just impossible to proceed. So, I would like to, I'd like to have, I just brought it to the attention of the chairman that, if you look at the tape, you know, I second for discussion, but he does not have, he has a script, and the script does not allow discussion. And I, it seems to be a contradiction of terms, so...
So, as to the consent agenda item, you pulled items for discussion, correct?
That's prior, and that's another point in time. Those items, those items are, there are items that do not fit under the consent agenda. But when the consent agenda comes up for vote, it is, it receives a motion to approve. And I then, they asked, the chair asked for a second. And I procedurally approved, seconded the motion for discussion. It's a motion, and I approved, I seconded it for discussion. But the chair has a script that historically there is not, it's not allowed. And I've never heard of a motion, a motion that can't be discussed. It doesn't even, it sounds like a contradiction of terms.
So, a motion is made to accept the consent agenda?
Correct.
If that motion is then seconded?
For discussion by a board member.
What are you saying, for discussion?
Saying for discussion, if I'm not mistaken. The motion was for acceptance of the consent agenda. Am I saying that correctly? And then we are asking for a second. You can't change your, you can't change the motion with your second, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
Doesn't it say with the exception of, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of the listed items that have been pulled for discussion?
Correct.
And then there's a second, and then we vote, and then we move on to the items that have been pulled for discussion.
Well...
And then we get a motion and a second for that.
Right. Okay, so, and I understand that, I understand that position, that argument. My position is that to put a motion on the floor, a motion cannot be presupposed to be accepted. It has to be, then perhaps, I'm in error for seconding. It's an item that is on the agenda, consent item, and I don't think it can be presupposed to be accepted. It can go on the floor like any other motion.
Can I, for the sake of, so we can move beyond this, let me, let me read, I have the actual script. This is what the script said. "May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C. 6.1 through C. 17.2 with the exception of items C. 6.1, C. 7.1, and C. 9.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion." There was a mo, that's the motion. It was, it was someone made the motion, and then you second it, but your second can't change the original motion, according to Robert's Rules of Order, correct?
Well, and I seconded it for discussion. Now, is that improper? Do you, is there, is discussion not allowed? And if it isn't, then there should be a point of order called. I'm seconding for discussion. Now, that has to stand. Is that not correct? How do you get discussion on the motion?
There was discussion on the three items contained within the motion that were specifically pulled and relevant for discussion.
Okay, that's another point in time.
You want to discuss the motion of whether to accept the consent agenda items?
Correct. Which is what that vote was for.
You do realize that if you do that, you cannot then discuss the individual items. You'd be discussing whether to accept the consent agenda as a whole.
Correct. I, you know, be it, be it as it may, I would like discussion, and the purpose of the discussion, which is necessary, is to indicate that there is not consent on this item. So, they proceed, in other words, it's one, it's one vote out of five. But if there, if there is no discussion, and discussion is not allowed, then I believe that's a violation of Robert's Rules. I, you know, and that's why I'm asking, asking the chair. I, I wanted discussion. And I seconded for discussion. Maybe that shouldn't have been accepted.
So, let me say it this way. Let me, let me say this, because this, this work, this work session is scheduled for Neola, and that's what we really need to deal with. I'm going to ask Attorney Powers to put this on for our next work session, that we can have a conversation about it, Mr. Browning. That's the more appropriate way to do it, but I did not want to go by you and so you think that I'm not...
Yes, sir, I appreciate that. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll go from there. Did you have a comment, sir? Go to the microphone. Go to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, address the Board on this issue. I happen to have the latest edition of Robert's Rules here, and I think I can clarify pretty quickly. I, so, the idea of a consent calendar is that the items in there are not up for discussion or amendment. So, I agree with your position. And so, School Board member Browning, not every motion in Robert's Rules is allowed for there to be discussion. Some are, some aren't. This one, by convention, the whole idea is, there's no discussion on the motion to approve the consent calendar. It's, that's kind of the whole idea. It's expedited. Everything that's not pulled out can be just up or down vote. You can vote against it. So, there, there's generally no discussion. And I am a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians, not a registered parliamentarian, but I have some knowledge of this. And I do have some suggestions on expediting things in the future. Maybe I can give them to Attorney Powers and the chairman.
We welcome you back at that work session when we have it.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If you take that under advisement, I appreciate that. That's, that's exactly appropriate. That's what I'm looking for.
All right. We're going to move forward. Thank you, guys, for giving us that moment. We're going to move forward with our Neola Policy Review. We started this a few months ago, and we're going to continue it. Attorney, can you tell us where we're starting from, and we'll move forward from there?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Cummings. Today, we are going to be working on our 6,000, 7,000, and 8,000 series of policies. And each of you have your, your manual there in front of you, which has all of our policies printed. There have been some alterations that are proposed, and we will be discussing those as we go. As we continue throughout the day today, provided we get through all three of those sessions, tomorrow's session will be used for any that have been pulled for further edit or, or discussion by the Board. And if not, if we go into Thursday with these, then we can continue on Friday. We have those, those days set aside as well. So, at this point, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Tom Whitmer. He is the Neola representative here, who is going to be leading our discussion as he has in the past. Attorney Tom Whitner, Whitmer.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Good morning, Board members. Here we are for our, I believe, our third workshop, going through the policies. The 6,000 is about the finances. Your staff has done a lot of work on these. What you see before you are the recommended replacement policies for the district in this area. And as we did before, we can ask if any Board member has a issue or question about a policy, and then we'll, we'll discuss that. If there are no questions, there's really no reason, there is no discussion, I guess, if there's no question. So, we can start with the 6,100 Uniform Records and Accounts. And, or whichever Board member would have a comment about this, or the next one, or... I see Ms. Campbell looks like she's ready to...
Just a point of clarification. Chair, are we going to continue as we have been with any simple edits that need to be made, be sent to Terry Brown, just in the interest of continuing to move things forward?
And speaking of which, some, some of you have indicated that there were edits that you wanted to send to us for, you know, minor scrivener's errors, like an S instead of an A somewhere, or something like that. If those thing, if you have any of those, and you've kept notes on them, please do send them along so that we can make those, those edits. And of course, we'll be dealing with substantive edits today, but sometimes, of course, there are cases where a single word makes a huge difference, so...
Right. Thank you. Go ahead, Chair Campbell. I mean, Vice Chair Campbell, sorry.
My first question is on policy number 6520, and this is on page 826 in our notebooks. Policy 6520, page 826 in our notebooks. It's specifically on payroll deductions. I have two questions on this policy. So, my first question is in the second paragraph where it states that voluntary payroll deductions will be approved by the Board and authorized in writing by the employee. I wonder if we want to somehow change the words "in writing" because I'm, or if we classify electronic communication as in writing? Perhaps if the Board or the district was able to go to some online payroll service of some kind, where we wouldn't have actually paper in writing, crossing lines to make any kind of payroll deduction changes? I don't know how other districts have handled that when there's an electronic. Do they consider in writing the same as an electronic form? That's kind of to Mr. Whitmer. I'm not certain.
Yeah, I'm not aware. I certainly think the Honors would want to have affirmative stated request in, either in writing or in some kind of electronic satisfactory electronic way. Is there now a, a way that this is captured electronically anywhere? Or do they still do?
I don't think that it is right now, but I think the future could be yes. I mean, my hope is that we would be able to get to that level of sophistication.
So, can we in this, define what in writing is, and state that in writing could be handwritten or electronic email, whatever, something like that.
Signature, just as good as a wet signature, things like that.
So, in writing or electronic signature, perhaps, or elec...
I would suggest in writing, comma, via electronic or physical means.
Okay. That's, that's fine with me.
Would that be universal throughout the policy, then? District policy, is, does that set a precedent for other?
For the in writing?
The in writing?
Well, it, it would not, it would only apply to this policy specifically, because we still do have limitations on the acceptance of electronic signatures, for example. So, in cases where an electronic signature is not permitted, and that, that's what I would want to avoid, is I would want to avoid someone typing a signature. So, where signature is required, signature needs to continue to be required. Now, in writing via electronic means, I wouldn't want it to be confusing and indicate somehow that someone that can then type their signature. It would have to be an electronic copy, but it would require a wet signature as opposed to an electronic signature in most cases. So, if we need to further clarify that, we can. But there, there are requirements across the Board for electronic signature. That's a little different than the, than the form or something like that, so...
Do you want to say if allowed? Do we want to, do we want to address that? No?
No.
This is just for payroll deduction, this policy in particular. So, if we do change that to in writing by electronic or physical means, then Item B, almost at the bottom of the policy, also says that employee may cancel non-compulsory deductions on written notice. And I'm assuming that that written notice would also apply to electronic or, I don't know if it needs to be written again there, or if we're just assuming throughout the whole policy, that essentially if someone has a donation or a deduction coming out, that they can do something by electronic or physical means to make that change. So, I, if it needs to be in both locations in that same policy, that's fine.
Let's put it in both places, so there's no question.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. So, that was my question on that policy. My next question, once that one is... I don't want to jump ahead of you, so I'll just watch. I'm watching the screen, or that screen. My next question is on policy 6550, and this is just a point of clarification, a couple things in this policy. Page 831, for those of us following along in our notebooks. Policy 6550, page 831. There are a couple of questions I had in this policy, basically asking if this is statute-driven. I see there are statutes listed, but if separate sections within this statute are specifically, or excuse me, within this policy, are statute-driven, or if they are up to individual boards. And so, starting with the in-district mileage, that the superintendent or school board employee shall be reimbursed, and how mileage is computed and all that, is that statute-driven, Mr. Whitmer, that, that school board members and superintendents are to be reimbursed for travel, in-district travel? And it even says traveling from home or to a temporary location shall consider temporary work location, official headquarters, and that, all of that?
Yes, it's largely statutory.
And that's what I was asking. Is, is that statute that Board members are, okay, I, all right. I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not putting something in there that, that's interesting to me. And then later on in that same policy, under the out-of-county travel, this again was that whenever, item number six, so this is on page 832. I know we talked quite a bit about rewards of travel if the hotel, and I don't know what we landed on in that. Dr. Gollit, shaking her head.
Yes, I may, Chair. I have this as a request to pull for revision due to our previous conversation. There are multiple places that we found in policy that need to be in procedure, so this is one of those that needs to be updated.
Okay.
Okay. Per our last conversation.
Okay. Chair?
Yes, sir. We would need to then have, if we're pulling it for revision, we would just need to have whatever suggested edits sent to Terry so she can make the suggested edits, and we'll bring it up tomorrow.
Correct, my addition, my additions to that is...
You're not coming with...
No, it's not. There we go. Relatedly, I'll mention now, for the record, 1440, 3440, 4440, and 6424 also will have to have alignment in the same language. They're all related to that travel conversation.
And I'm presuming, and maybe I shouldn't presume, I'm presuming that, that what your wish is to send us the proposed edits, and then we'll do it tomorrow, as opposed to if you wish to talk through it and do it now, we can do it that way, too. That's, it's either way.
My, my notes indicate that per our last conversation, per the Board's wishes last time that we can make those edits, they just need to be made. We'll have to pull those and edit those.
Understood.
Because there's a, there's a contradiction in all of those policies per the last conversation.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final question I have in that particular policy is on our page 833, and it's the second to last paragraph in the entire policy. And it's really just a point of clarification. I guess I'm just learning as we're reading this policy, and I'm not certain this is currently in our policies. Temporary dependent care, that if hypothetically down the road that we have a school board member that actually has young children, that if they travel out of town, then those, that temporary dependent care cost can actually be paid by the district. And I just wanted to make sure that that's accurate, and that's statute-driven. It's the second to last paragraph in the same policy, which again, is policy number 6550. 6550, the second to last paragraph references temporary dependent care costs.
I don't think vice chair, I don't think vice chair, that it has to be young children.
Okay. Oh, okay. I was using, yeah, I was using a hypothetical scenario, but if it is any other dependent, right, any, any other dependent.
And I think that's just for, from how I've read it before, that deals with federal, look at one, see the cost, a direct result of the individual's travel for federal award.
Okay. Oh, yes, it is that. Okay.
For travel paid for with federal funds.
Correct.
So, what would be a scenario that we would have?
I guess if, if you were going to DC for something, that they requested that you come up there for, or we come up there for, and you had to incur some costs with childcare or dependent care for that. Yeah.
Okay. That just kind of stuck out to me. I hadn't seen something like that before.
Travel for six months or more, so...
Oh, is it?
It would be long-term, moving the family to comply with the grant.
I didn't see six months or more in that either.
Travel costs for dependents are unallowable, except for travel of a duration of six months or more.
Yeah, but this, this is any federal travel. This is, this is just for long-term travel. This is for short-term. How I read it. Is that how you read it, Ms. Campbell?
That's how I read it.
Okay, I read it the same way. But it's, again, it's for federal. It goes back to that, to the travel costs paid or reimbursed from federal funds.
Right. Okay. Those are all my questions on that policy.
Would we want to have both, if we want to have those two directions, would it, would it be applicable, and do we need to clean that out and not have it?
I think it's fine.
It's okay, it doesn't hurt?
Because of the, the, I'll say rarity of instances where we have that kind of federal need, and it looks as if potentially even there would be federal funds to cover the travel cost. I'm not, I'm not certain of any...
And anyone can always choose not to accept them.
Sure.
Correct.
Am I think, are we missing an instance?
I would, I would prefer as a superintendent to leave that in. I think the clarity on those federal guidelines are important.
Yep.
Yes, do leave it in? Is that what you said?
Yes, I would leave those in.
Okay.
There, there are things that I think need to be procedure, not policy, but I think this needs to be in policy, per the federal guidelines.
Okay. My next question is on policy 6610, and this is actually page 836 in our notebooks. 6610, and I didn't make a list of all those numbers that you said. Is this one that you were pulling? Because it, it does mention on our page 836, under expenditures requiring prior approval, I just didn't know if we wanted to keep these amounts at where they're located in this policy.
Chair, if I may, this is correct. This is, this is the second item I wanted to pull for revisions due to our previous conversations.
Okay, all right, so we're pulling this one, too.
There are several edits here. Thank you.
Okay, so we're pulling 6610 also. Because also in that same policy, and you may have noted this in your pulling of it, but on page 839, it mentioned that checks may be prepared in advance. And I'm assuming that some of these travel arrangements that we have on student travel and field trips and things may actually have credit card payments. So, right now, it just says checks. So, those were my two questions on that policy, but since you're pulling it, I'll let you take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my final question in section 6,000 is the very last policy, 6840, page 853. And this is one that I didn't know if this belonged in policy or should be procedure. Did we pull all the same ones, Dr. Gollit? I didn't make a note of every...
I share, Campbell, we, we... I shared, Campbell, we did, I too pulled, I'm going to pull 6840, and particularly because we have positions listed that no longer exist, and that when we have policy to avoid that, is one example of not listing those, so we've already made some edits to that, need to change that.
It seems as if, unless Neola says there's a reason to have the auditor selection committee in policy, it seems that is a procedure.
Well, yes, but I would say that some procedures are so important that they should be in policy. We have student discipline procedures are in policy, search and seizure procedures, Title IX procedures, all those things are in policy, so this is one of those that we strongly recommend you have a policy on.
Okay.
Neola has two different versions available for this, I was just looking to see which version the district had chosen, I think it's version two, the shorter, simpler version.
So we just probably want to change the.
So this one is being pulled for title changes and.
Correct, yes, so Chair, thank you. Our recommendation is to keep the policy, it's just to update, because we've listed positions that do not need to be listed as such, we have a better way to address those, so that policy changes don't need to occur when those positions change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the clarification, that's all I have in 6000s, I don't know if anybody else has a 6000 question.
I do. Well, just as a point of clarification, along with the electronic direction that society is moving in when it comes to things in writing, like receipts and so on, there was, I lost my spot, but there's a couple other policy having to do with internal funds, and writing receipts for those, and if the written receipts have to continue, and that's a good idea, great, but if there's an electronic version that will be acceptable in terms of continuity across that topic, just something to think about.
Was that in the petty cash funds, or do, was, I'm sorry.
Petty cash, I think it was.
Was it in petty cash? 6620, I'm just, page 841, was that it? I haven't, I just was trying to find.
I'm going to it. Thought it was eight thirty something.
May I clarify, Board Member, Thrower, are you looking at 6610 with the internal funds?
Oh, maybe that's it.
And the auditors generally guide those practices, I'm sure Ms. Boston Ellis is watching, and, but those auditors usually typically guide those guidelines.
Okay.
But we will review that, your question specifically is regarding the receipting?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're pulling that one anyway, right?
We're pulling, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I did have one on 60, 6540, and it's just a question for clarification, are those current, it's page 830, are those the current amounts for consultants, that's in there?
Oh. Consultant agreements. Sorry, what page?
I'm sorry, 830.
830. I see it.
Because there are some amounts in there, there's some limitations amounts, that the deputy superintendent is authorized to do. Are those the current amounts?
That's a board decision about what those amounts are, they're not in statute.
Correct.
I don't believe those are the current amounts, I mean, I believe that I've seen independent contractor, that $65 per hour, something like that.
So do we need to put those amounts, or do we need to put the max amount allowable?
So the policy.
That's a question, that's a question.
Yeah, so the policy doesn't have to continue to be reviewed over and over every time the amount might change, we might want to put a maximum, but what that maximum is, I don't know.
Chair, thank you, I'm glad you brought this up, because the language needs to change as well, to be consistent with our other policies, superintendent design indicates designate, so the language needs to change, anyway. Great catch.
Good catch. Missed that one.
That's why we're all.
Have a look at the balance.
That's why we have a board.
No, it's why we're all here together.
What, now, let me be clear, what, what language needs to change?
Deputy superintendent, it should not be de, it should be superintendent or designate, am I correct? Or, I think that's how we.
And it also would need to indicate that the deputy, or that the superintendent and board chair are authorized to enter into agreements, because those are going to require both the board chair and the superintendent. And if we use the conjunctive and, as opposed to or.
We'll edit it.
We'll, we'll edit that.
And those amounts.
But the amounts, I don't, I don't know what the amounts are for certain, I just believe that those probably do need to be checked.
Okay.
So do you just want to pull that one, superintendent? So let's just pull that one.
Yes, the whole one needs to be changed.
And work on that one completely. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, are we in 7000s now?
Ms. Thrower, you have any more for 6000?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Brown, you have any more for 6000? Okay, so we're moving 7000.
7230 is the one we've already pulled for tomorrow, okay? So, just to make a note, 7230, that was page 863, so that one we'll have further discussion tomorrow. I had a question on Policy 7250, and this is page 865 for us. Policy 7250, page 865. Commemoration of school facilities, this is about naming of facilities, and I understand it's commemoration, and so that tends to have an understanding in and of itself. But I wonder if this limits the opportunity, should the district choose to go into any kind of sponsorship arrangement, or anything, a large cash donation of some kind, and the way this is written, so I'm going to use an example, the way this is written, the second paragraph, is an employee of the district could be honored, they must be deceased or no longer employed with the district, and basically, those are the only people that could have their name on one of our facilities. And if any of you have traveled down International Speedway Boulevard in Volusia County, you'll see that, I believe it's Mainland High School, has a Vince Carter Athletic Facility, named after the former, named after the former NBA player who was a student there, who I'm certain donated some contribution to ensure that that occurred. The way our current policy is written, and the way this policy is stated, is we would not have the ability to do a naming opportunity of anyone other than a district employee who is deceased or no longer working with the district.
We have, I think we have some. We have one at Donnellan High School, the weight room, that was donated by Ernie Mills.
Okay, but according to our policies, though, and I've looked, I mean, I don't know that that's policy-driven, I want to make sure that we have in policy, from a sponsorship standpoint, that we can accept those gifts, and that we can offer naming opportunities.
Allison, what page are you on?
I'm on page 865.
This doesn't require that a non-employee who might have made a significant contribution has to be deceased or not employed, I mean, it's only, it's only applying to employees of the district, that last sentence.
Right. So you're, you're saying that you believe that the intent of this policy does not limit the opportunity to have other naming opportunities?
The top part.
Yeah, then, the subject of the first paragraph talks about making a significant contribution to enhancement of education.
Yeah, that top part.
Well-being of district, I mean, that could be anything.
And then it would be sub-limited by the idea that if they're, that person is a district employee, they need to either have no longer been retired, or been retired, no longer have been employed with the district, or deceased. That way, we're, we're not having a naming opportunity for a current employee.
So it's basically two criteria.
Top, top section talks about those who are not employees or past employees, the second sentence, second paragraph covers those that are employees, former employees.
Right.
So it doesn't prohibit it, it, it does allow it.
Okay, good. Just wanting to make sure we're good on that.
Office card.
Let's see, I had a question on Policy 7430.01, unless somebody has one before that, that's page 876. Page 876, Policy 7430.01. And the way the 123, fourth paragraph is written, it says, "under the direction of the fire official appointed by the board," and I just wanted to ensure that we do that, do we appoint a fire official? Page 876, Policy 7430.01, "under the direction of the fire official appointed by the board." It feels like that's an operations thing, that the superintendent would appoint, would put that person in place?
And is that on the staffing plan?
Right, and is a fire official on the staffing plan, or is it a designate? Right, so I was, that language confused me.
Where are you?
Page 876, the fourth paragraph, first sentence, "under the direction of the fire official appointed by the board."
Yeah, because it used to be Chuck Steagle, I think, and he was a school board employee, and I think that that was just one of his functions, he was tasked with, but that's a good point, and in that case, he has been appointed by us, I guess, because he's employed by us.
Yeah, he's authorized, and we approved it through the staffing plan, that would be appointed.
As long as his job description listed him as a fire official.
And I'm looking, Mr. Whitmore, if I may, Chair, for Neola's guidance, because it could be, doesn't mean it has to be in the staffing plan, per se, as a listing of their job title, but that they're the designate, their task with that.
As long as they're appointed as such by the.
As such, right. Recognized as such.
Right, and I.
That is a, in, I'm looking at the Neola template, it talks about, the word is "final," under the direction of the final official, but I think "fire" is the correct term, so somebody caught that.
And of course, we'll need to ensure that we're always in compliance with this, but Florida Statute 1013 point, or, sorry.
Yes, it is, you were right.
Okay, 1013.12 indicates the uniform fire safety standards, and the, and alternate fire safety plants and educational facility, sorry, fire safety evaluation systems shall be administered and enforced by fire officials certified by the state marshal under 633.216. And, let's see, these standards must be used by all public agencies when inspecting public educational and ancillary plants, and the fire safety standards must be used by county, municipal, or independent special fire control district inspectors when performing fire safety inspections of public educational and ancillary plants and educational facilities.
So does, because I'm, I'm still looking at this one as well, when you go back to the second paragraph, it also talks about a district licensed safety official, and the district licensed fire official.
Fire official.
Or wants by the local fire official for the fire safety, that's the person, that's who does the.
And of cour, yeah, and of course, the reason it's in this policy is that it is statutorily driven, so.
Is it statutory of a board, or superintendent, or can it be superintendent, can it be procedural in terms of changing, or does it come from the board?
Yeah, that's my question, if it needs to be board-appointed, or if it can be superintendent, I mean, certainly we approve the staffing plan, we approve the job descriptions, but.
And the recommendation would come from a superintendent and approved by the board.
Right, we just have to ensure that if the language needs to be, that the person is a designated fire official, that that's actually in their job description, because I don't believe we do have in the staffing plan, and I don't think our intent is to have in the staffing plan a fire, a district fire official.
Right, I would, correct, I would say it should be in the job description.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be their title, because.
As far as the appointment goes, it would be under the authority of the board by statute, under 1001.41 and 1001.42.
Okay, so whomever that person is, whoever our designate is now, we just need to make sure that job descri, you know how I am on job descriptions, you guys.
And that can be the superintendent.
That the superintendent puts that job, but if there's an edit that needs to be made to the job description, that has to come before us to be approved, so.
Great point. Mr. Campbell, we'll make sure, I'll make a note of that to make sure it's in the job description.
Thank you.
Yeah, just the procedural aspect that it actually is in compliance, this wouldn't, probably wouldn't come up unless there was, there was a situation that, that took place, a fire or something, and would we be on top of it?
Right. I'm not certain why I had this written here, so let me read over, I'm on page 879, Policy 7440.02, this is about vandalism, damage, loss, and mischief. I wrote the words, the word TikTok here, so I'm just wanting to see why I wrote that, bear with me just a moment.
Because of that.
Oh, because of the TikTok challenge where they were vandalizing, but I'm not certain if, if there was something that actually was questioning in this policy. Policy 7440.02, page 879, student, his or her parents, if the student is a minor, shall be requested in writing to restore, this was why I asked this question. So, were the parents or guardians of all these students who committed this vandalism request to restore or replace the damaged property? Because that's what this policy says. So, I don't think we currently have this policy, I mean, I think this is one that is a Neola, but I've made a note of that, that's why I wrote TikTok, because if we had this policy in place, all of those students that we know committed the vandalism, some of them we don't know, but all of the ones that had done, then their parents actually would have been held responsible, if we are moving forward with approving this policy as written.
Gives you an option.
Right.
And I can indicate that where those intersect, where vandalism intersects with the criminal justice system, and it results in the detention of a student, and ultimately either entry into a pre-trial intervention program, or diversion program of some sort, that restitution is ordered, and it is made clear to the student at the time that, that restitution, if it is coming from the parents, that the student is also to repay the parent for that, but the fact is that where it intersects with criminal justice system, restitution is sought in every case where there's a, where there is actual damage. And that also affects when we get into those situations where the case is charged as a misdemeanor or a felony. Criminal mischief, which is the criminal term for vandalism, criminal mischief, under $1,000 is a misdemeanor, but over $1,000 is a felony. Well, the cost of a bathroom sink can well be close to that, you know, that line or more, so, because installation and types and industrial nature of it, so that also affects how, how we, how it is charged, you know, if, if someone gets a, a deal or a diversion to a lesser, a lesser sentence, they may still be responsible for the entire amount. So restitution is sought, at least when it's in connection with criminal justice, where it has not been, I'm not sure to what degree it has been sought, but this authorizes us to do so, and perhaps directs us to do so.
Right. So I don't think we currently have this policy, but I would be all in favor of it, just because of what we've just gone through.
I think procedurally, it needs to be, if that is something that we're doing, the question of amount of restitution, plan for restitution, needs to probably be part of the disciplinary process, so that it doesn't get skipped in some cases and sought in others.
Right. And it does reference the student code of conduct here, but that probably needs to be some kind of update if that's not currently in student code of conduct.
Code of conduct, I think it's supposed to be coming up for review.
Okay.
In March.
Perfect, thank you.
So definitely, there needs to be a way to collect that restitution.
Right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Um. Can we, it, it, would it be appropriate to direct it toward the criminal statutes? If that's the way it is, what, what I'm concerned about is that this, in order to get restitution, we don't have to drive it in a certain direction.
Well, this, this policy would, would indicate that we can, we can always seek restitution civilly as opposed to criminally. This policy directs us that we may do so and perhaps that we shall do so with the, in conjunction with code of student conduct. We would need a process to ensure if we don't already, I don't know the answer to that, whether, that, that in each case where restitution is an issue, it is indeed sought. But the criminal justice, once it enters there, we largely stay out of that. And what happens is we're contacted Marion County Public Schools as the victim of a crime, and we are asked for a restitution amount for which we then provide the state attorney's office with the amount of restitution. And then it's, then it's up to the, at that point, defendant and the probation officer and the judge to track how much restitution has been paid. So. But the criminal justice portion, I would be very reluctant to put anything regarding that into this policy. This just entitles us and directs us to seek it as a, as a.
And this doesn't, this doesn't drive us toward the criminal.
No, we don't, we don't.
It allows us to function without going there.
Well, exactly. What this is saying is, is exactly that, that, that we, we may seek restitution without going into the criminal justice system. We can seek it as part of our process.
I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that we should be the ones making the determination of whether it should be referred to criminal justice system based on, you know, can they pay restitution or something like that? That's an independent determination that's made by the school resource officer, law enforcement officers. You know, being able to pay the restitution on it doesn't necessarily indicate anything about what should happen or will happen with the case from a criminal punishment perspective.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're good with that one. My next question is on policy seventy-five ten, page eight eighty-three in our notebooks. Policy seventy-five ten, page eight eighty-three. And under the bold heading of use by non-school-oriented organizations and groups, this is referencing use of district facilities. We do mention that the payment should be made in advance by a check. And I just wondered if we, if that still is the way we want to go? I mean, that we always have to receive deposit checks? Again, just if we could hold a credit card or just, I, I'm not certain if that's how we handle, well, let me, let me use the example. You can't purchase anything in schools right now on, with a check or with cash because everything has to be done electronically. We've just done that this year. So that's why when we mentioned that a check must be used to, to make a deposit on a use of facility, I'm, I'm curious to know if that's the correct language. I, just from a procedural standpoint on this policy as well, because this is use of district facilities and perhaps if we have school gymnasiums that are being used on a regular basis or, or something of that nature, I, I think it's procedure to ask the question, but those funds that are received, this policy doesn't say one way or the other, but those funds that are received, I believe, go back to the district as opposed to going to the school that's being used. And I don't know if that's the way procedurally that that can and should be done, but those are two separate questions about. This policy doesn't say anything about that specifically because I think that is procedure. But for example, if there was a, a school that happened to be used every weekend, this policy says that a representative of the school shall be on the school grounds during hours of, that the facility is being used, and the supervisory and custodial fees will be calculated, et cetera. But my question is, let's use an example, or let's say this building, okay? Let's say that the MTI auditorium is being used on a regular basis by outside community groups that have nothing to do with the school district. And they're using it every single week, and we always have to have staff here, et cetera, et cetera. But those fees, I believe, that are charged go back to the district as opposed to going directly to MTI, whereas it's MTI staff that's always required to be here. Does that make sense? So it's, it's just, it, I, it's procedural. I mean, it doesn't belong in policy. But that's kind of just a question as to how we would handle the rental agreements from the internal side of, does that money actually go back to the school? Because perhaps a school would want to say, "I'll rent out my gym every week. You want to come? And I, I'll be here because I know that helps my bottom line." I don't know that that's the, that the, I don't know. What do you think, Dr. Collet?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Um, it's a great question. I'll have, honestly, I'll have to check. I haven't had, and I think partially because of the pandemic, a lot of insight into how we've done it. Historically, my experience has been money goes back to the school. It's an incentive for them, that they're taking care of it. If it's a, if it's a cafeteria, you know, they, they should get, you know, we cover the costs, of course, but they should have the bunny.
Right.
Because they're incurring, I, I don't want to call it a burden, so it's not a burden.
Right.
Um, but, but they're committed to that partnership.
Responsibility.
And that responsibility. And so, there's an opportunity for them to, to benefit from that.
Right.
At that local level, absolutely. I'll check on that.
I, because I don't have confirmation that it's not, but I have heard that it wasn't. So I just, if you can check on that, that would be great.
Thank you.
But back to the question about a check payable, do we want to say that it's required a check?
You could just delete the words of, by.
Or just.
Take out by check payable and just say, made in advance to the school board of Marion County.
Okay. I'm fine with that if you all are.
Just delete check payable.
Okay, perfect.
These days they can Venmo it.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm like, we, we need to get out of this, just advance to the school board.
And for clarification, I did hear from Ms. Boston Ellis that it's checks only. At this point, we'd have to update the system and set it up to do something besides checks.
Oh, okay. All right. But if we at least say that they can pay, then we won't have to go back and edit this policy if we ever do go to an electronic form of receiving those deposits.
Makes sense.
Which, while we're going through this huge, big policy review, let's try and get everything as clean as we can to not have to.
Can we do it? Now, I'm, I'm in agreement that it, and it should be a flexible thing. I, I would think it's procedural.
Well, right now, we, I guess we don't have the electronic capabilities to accept any other form of payment right now, but I think we might be pursuing hopefully a different kind of, at some point, system to handle that. Okay? We were on the district facilities and we, that was page eight eighty-three, and we determined that we were taking out that they must pay a deposit by check. So it's just going to be that a payment shall be made in advance to the school board in the event, and this is a paragraph, under use of non-school-oriented organizations and groups, the third sentence there, we're just taking out that they have to pay by check in the event that we do get to a way that they would be able to have a credit card on file or something of that nature for a deposit or something like that, so.
I wonder if we could put something along the lines of payment shall be made in advance by method, practicable method, you know, something that doesn't. Since, yeah, because we're not able to accept Venmo or something right now, but it doesn't mean we won't in the future, so I don't, and who knows what the future of payments are going to look like?
Bitcoin. Just kidding, just kidding.
Just leave it open. Yeah, then it, then the superintendent would set that, the procedure. And we just leave it open, and then we don't have to predict the future.
Just if they pay in advance.
Yeah, pay in advance.
End of story.
And then whatever method is allowed, that's what's, that's the way it goes. Works for me.
Okay. My only other question in this seven thousand section is policy seventy-five forty-four. I'm not sure if anybody else has another question in the seven thousands before that. Policy seventy-five forty-four, page nine hundred. Page nine hundred, policy seventy-five forty-four. So I don't believe we currently have a policy that aligns with this, and maybe Terry can confirm that. Interestingly enough, I, I did a research project in my doctoral program about HR having, or human resources departments having social media policies for employees. I don't think we currently have one. So this one was very interesting to me, that this policy is potentially coming in. And the area that was most interesting to me, for those of us looking in our notebooks, it's at the, it's the last paragraph on page nine hundred, but for the computer screen over there, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paragraphs down where it start, it's still in the use of social media, but it, the sentence starts, "As such, the district will monitor." So it might be, it's almost just before your, yeah, I can't really, yeah, I think you're on the right spot. So, "As such, the district will monitor posted comments to verify they are on topic." Now, mind you, this is employees of the school district posting to social media. Because it also states in this third line down, "Employees' personal posts on public platforms are limited and restricted to matters of general public interest that are not related to the employee's specific employment." And then it goes on to say that employees in administrative positions are ordinarily not permitted to post personal comments on matters of general public interest because to do so would be misconstrued as board-sponsored speech. So while I agree with this, I want to know who is going to monitor this and how in the world we are going to, what, what, what we're going to do if we actually put this speech into place? I can give you an example of why having this in your policy is important, but I don't know who then in the district is responsible for monitoring said personal comments of seven thousand employees on social media.
The, the board recognizes that employees may use social media for personal as well as professional mean, reasons. The board regulates employees' use of social media for purposes related to their district assignment to the same extent as it regulates any other form of employee communication in that regard. "As such, the district will monitor posted comments to verify they're on topic, consistent with posted rules for use of forum, et cetera." So I believe, though it may require further clarification, the paragraph above it speaks to, as, as indicated by the start of the phrase, "as such." So it's indicating that, yes, we understand people are, can use it for personal and professional reasons, and we regulate it for their district assignment reasons if they're, if they're using it as part of a district assignment. We've got a class science fair webpage or something, you know, whatever.
Question, is this, you're just talking about district social media accounts versus personal social media accounts? Because I'm reading it to understand that this is for district social media account platforms. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. The, um, the sentence that was not included in here from the Neola template is, "The district uses approved social media platforms, sites as interactive forms of communication, and either accepts, or invites, or welcomes choices there, public comments." And then it, "The district-approved social media platform sites are considered as limited public forums," and then it goes into the "as such." For somebody that didn't get into the.
So this is for a district platform, not a personal?
Not, not entirely. The reason we left that out is because all of our social media channels from the district do not have public comment.
Turned off.
They're all turned off on all of our district social media. So that's the reason we left that sentence out, Mr. Whitmore. But this actually says in this, "Employees' personal posts on public forums, public platforms, are limited and restricted to matters of general public interest that are not related to the employee's," so this is personal, employee-specific employment. So any employee, so we don't have this part, policy currently in place, but any employee that goes out to social media and starts venting about our COVID policy or about anything else, if the district was monitoring those comments, that employee potentially could be reprimanded, though we don't have that procedure in place. So.
I don't think this is intended for, for Facebook. It's, it's sites that, where the district has communicated something.
How would you know?
When you look at, when you look at the fourth paragraph, it says, "In designating district-approved social media platforms/sites, the superintendent shall," so this is not talking about going out personal stuff. This is talking about.
Well, then why does it say employees' personal posts?
I think those personal posts on those district-approved platforms.
But you're saying you don't have any.
We don't have comments.
So on our Facebook, the school has a Facebook page?
Yes.
So you can't make comments on the Facebook page?
No. It is a one-way communication channel.
Yeah, it's a one-way. But this does sound to me like it is, you know, Big Brother. Where, just, just for example, a live post by, by the chair, that's, that's something that is, would easily be squelched and be unallowed.
So I, I hear what you're saying.
I'm not in favor at all.
I completely understand what you're saying. However, I can give you the opposite to that. If you have an employee who is a very public face for said school, said organization, said department, whatever, and they are disgruntled about something and go out on their personal post and complain about a specific parent, a specific student, a specific anything that is pertaining to their public face, but they're just venting, "I can't believe that this happened to whatever." In, in my opinion, right now, we don't have policy or procedure. I think that still spells that out, that that employee could be reprimanded. And I have seen in the public, I mean, in the private sector, actually terminated because they've been asked to not continue to do that. They continued in that behavior and actually lost a job because of the public face that person had representing that organization. And we don't have anything right. And I'm not saying we have anybody that is in violation of that, just saying we don't have anything that protects us.
On the other side of that, even positive, even po, you were, you were characterizing it as negative, but let's say endorsing or in favor of, it would be identical. Just an opinion. This is posting and not negative.
Attorney Powers?
Yes. First of all, we currently do have a policy in place, telecommunication plan and electronic communication use, eight point six oh, which is what you asked for Terry to look up.
Yes.
And, and we do have another one as well, and that is eight point six oh one. However, suggestion, the entire paragraph beginning "as such," based on your comments, Ms. Campbell, I'd like for you, the board, to review that for deletion and just see if there's anything in there that you want to retain from it, from that paragraph. Otherwise, deletion would resolve the question.
I would be in favor of deletion, absolutely, because it, when, when you have broad terms, like for instance, over my, over my telephone, there are often multiple communications that would be considered in some definition as social media. And, and, but they're positive in informing, for example. And that they're positive, you absolutely, I, I believe, cannot go down a Big Brother approach of judging the positive or negative nature. You can shut off a response, but to ever begin to have the state monitoring individual free speech is regardless of how you want to characterize it, is whether it's social or, or not social, or, you know, more than one person, it's communication.
So, so I, while I understand what you're saying, and having the government monitor Big Brother, those employees have chosen to work for the government. So it would be like any private employer also wanting to ensure their employees are following the procedures of, of employment. And so while it's the government, and it may feel like Big Brother, it's also because those employees work for the government.
And this board is, I think technically, employees. So I, I can just think of, of, put a number to it, fifty posts I've seen that do relate positively, but they do relate, and they'd have to immediately be, be taken down. And, and, and there wouldn't be the normal communication. I know I've seen the Reverend out, out. I know I've seen the Reverend, you know, considerably, there are just, there are just a lot of issues, and they would cross.
But under that consideration, this actually would still cover that, because things he posts are general public interest. And so this actually allows for that, because, anyway, if we remove it-
It looks great to me.
If we remove it, that's fine.
Yeah, it looks, I would say, remove it.
Our current policy under eight point six oh one, A, indicates only authorized district personnel may utilize social networking to communicate events, updates, updates and school activities. B, the school board assumes no liability for direct and/or indirect damages arising from an employee's unauthorized use of social networking sites for personal use. Users are solely responsible for the content they disseminate using social media resources. And C, at no time are employees and volunteers permitted to post information related to the school board that is protected by local, state, or federal law. Employees and volunteers are not authorized to post or electronically send documents and/or photos of or produced by employees or students using social media resources unless first approved in writing by the parents and the district public relations officer. So this appears to be created for a few reasons. One, we have a FERPA, Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. District employees can't go taking pictures of students within their classrooms or on the bus or things like that, and that's part of our current procedures already, and it's part of what our employee training is supposed to be, so they're not supposed to take those and disseminate them. But also, I believe that this envisions that the current scenario where we have, we do not open our social media, district social media to comments. Now, if we are going to delete that section in this proposed policy, which begins "as such," it may be wise for us to, at least procedurally or within policy, indicate that that is the intention for all district social media accounts. Because otherwise, if we do allow posting on district social media accounts, as opposed to people's personal stuff, but a district-sponsored, a district-sponsored social media account, then at that point, I think the need for somebody in the district to be looking at it and seeing what is being posted and monitoring it to make sure it's not, you know, obscene or whatever the case may be, so that it can be reported if it needs to be, or a privacy violation, or, you know, disclosure of information that shouldn't be, we would have an obligation to do that, and so therefore we must. In, in general, the purpose is for us not to create a public forum when our intention is for it to be a, a communication to the public at large and employees as to events or even communicating what we're doing here today.
I have a question. I know our Facebook account, our district Facebook account that's very new, has commenting turned off. And I, I don't Twitter, I read some Twitter posts, and I can't remember actually if school board employees that post on Twitter regarding school events and football scores and things like that, I don't know if those have commenting turned on or turned off. I guess that's my first question. If it is a school board employee reporting on social media of any kind, school board activities, positive or negative, are, is commenting allowed? That's my first question.
I think it's a valid question.
And then my second question speaks to school board specifically, because, school board members specifically, because this has been something we've really been warned about when it comes to ethics. Because we can't be certain that Facebook or any other social media platform is archiving things that might be requested as a public record, and if we can't produce that, then, then we can get ourselves in big trouble. So social media is a great social utility in, in so many ways, but it is a hotbed of controversy. There are definitely inherent challenges with, with using it. Communication to the public is so important, and for better or worse, people use Facebook, especially people our age, you know, that's what they look to, for better or worse, for accurate information, which isn't always accurate. And I know from experience that those posts are monitored, because that's how we find out about kids possibly intending to do terrible things in the community. It, it goes on social media first.
Right.
There's been, it's sad to say, but there's been so many posts before tragic things have happened in our schools, that we, that, that particular district, I, I can't believe they weren't aware of it. So I know that our district is on top of things like that. So I don't know, I was looking, I know personally someone that did lose their job that doesn't work for government because of their postings, and now I see that it says, you know, "This is my personal Facebook page, and all posts are reflective of my own personal opinions and views." You know, when you're working in the private sector, that probably covers you, but in the public sector, I don't think it does.
And Ms. Thor, I did just scroll through a couple of Twitter pages for a couple of our schools, and it looks like you can comment on every one of them. So on Twitter-
I just didn't want to say it without being sure.
Right, no, I, I, I mean, I didn't, I'm not calling out anybody in particular, but, you know, I did just scroll through a handful, and the comment little bubble is available on all of them, so.
And, and I think the, I, I think the idea that these are private companies, they're very prolific, issues that come up within the, within the community, like, for example, the one mil tax, for, for example, just a hot topic, current hot, hot topic, would be in violation of this, and there's, there, you know, it's, it's simply a, an interesting topic, positive, negative, just opinion, notice, and I can think of other situations such as functions that get, get posted, graduations, you know, and all these situations, and it's just a, it's just, if you stop and think about it, you cannot, it's, it's no, you can monitor, okay, I get that, that's a freedom, but you cannot, like, get a Big Brother, Big State approach over the top of, say, this board or any employee. I, I, I'm just not in favor of that at all. In other, these are companies, private companies, what you say to General Motors, for example, is, is of no interest to this. It's almost like a public relations control issue for me.
So is, is that saying that you would be in favor of us actually turning comments on, on our social media?
You could turn them on and off. I, I, I'm not in favor of private company embracing a private company like Facebook. I don't, I don't believe there is any entitlement to utilize a private company like that as a, as a public relations resource, like to influence the public. I, I, I don't, I don't buy into that at all. That's, that's using a specific company to promote a certain line of thought, a state-generated line of thought, and to me, that's improper.
To, to even have a district-run-
To even have it, yeah, because it's a private company, and, and so, and this is just, this is a personal-
And so is the New York Times, and so, so advertising in the Star banner also is us using a private company.
Well, it is, it is, and so you, it, that makes the point, it's, it's so enormous, so ubiquitous, it, it just is, it's so enormous that the state, just, just flip it over to being in Cuba, for example, and it's just impossible.
If I may, but it is statute-driven that we have to publicly notice our meetings in the Ocala Star.
And I like that, I like that.
But what you're asking for right now is us even communicating through a form of media that is owned and operated by a for-profit business.
That, that is a little bit different, and I do have some experience in it with the Marion Sun Times, and that is, that, that's based on the need to, to advertise a, a function, and it's, it's based on circulation. And so, yes, we do interact with the private world. It's hard to talk into Mike and turn and hold the conversation this way too, but social media, like a company like Facebook, is very different. That, that isn't, that isn't what we're talking about exactly, it's not the same, it's apples and oranges in terms of giving notice to the public.
Understood, but there are still channels of communication, and the ways that we are most able to communicate with the public are in avenues where the public resides. And just judging by a few parent of Marion County groups and six to 7,000 people who monitor different groups and things like that on social media and elsewhere, in order to communicate with the public, they prefer that we communicate with them where they are, frankly, and-
And I can, I, I agree to that, I, I, I get, I get that point, but who is monitoring the state? Like, who is monitoring us? That's, that's the other side of it. In other words, it has to be, there has to be an equal sign in the middle of it. So what we're saying here is not that we use it, you, you are free to use it. I'm saying you're free to use it, and you do not have to be afraid of the state monitoring you. When the chairman does a post, when I, I've got blog posts out there, they're, you know, that's constitutionally protected, and it has nothing to do with this school district in terms of monitoring or firing someone, or, and we're all, we're all employees. So it's good that we're all employees, I think, in this state, is what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and I, I would never be in, in favor, I say never, in favor of a Big State, Big Brother monitoring-
May I give you one other example?
Yes, please.
And sorry that we're belaboring this point, but I, I would like to give you another example of why it's important also to monitor employees' posts. This was in a private sector position, but an employee posted on their personal page picking up a gopher tortoise, which is illegal in the state of Florida, and they posted it personally, like, "Look what I found" kind of thing, and that employer went to them and said, "Please take this post down. Number one, this is illegal and can get you in a lot of trouble, but you also happen to have your employee shirt on in the picture, and, and we don't want that coming back on us." If that employer had not been monitoring, or at least looking, or someone sharing, or someone seeing that, that individual could have gotten in a lot of trouble and a lot of fronts, but, and it also could have come back on the business. So I, I understand exactly what you're saying, you're, you're concerned about this being Big Brother monitoring. The only reason it's Big Brother is because we are a function of the government.
Well, I think you get to do it.
I believe that this paragraph, actually, that we can remove it from policy, but it, I would recommend that Dr. Gullett consider some type of procedure of employees, and it may not be this stringent, it may, but in HR policy or HR procedures, to consider if we do have any implications, if employees are doing anything egregious on social media. I, and I don't know what egregious would be, but posting something that's illegal, like holding a gopher tortoise, would at least require some kind of verbal reprimand.
Let me ask a question. As district employees or whatever, we're expected to not engage in conduct that's unbecoming. Am I on, on the same page you are?
Yes, Chair, I was going to add, earlier when Attorney Powers went through some of the, the legal statutes, I would, my add to that is the professional code of conduct and ethics that come from the state of Florida. So we're divided by them, and, and so you are correct, Vice Chair Campbell, we've had situations that have come up that have been in conflict with those code of ethics. So, yes, there's some of that governed, but we will crosswalk that with anything else that might be missing. Thank you.
Right.
And that would be separate and apart from a policy that set that, and I think that's a, that's appropriate.
So it'd be more of an HR procedure.
Yeah.
Because, again, there's expectation that we wouldn't engage, anyone, any of us would engage in certain conduct that's unbecoming, especially by the mere fact that we are school board employees.
That's covered in our ethics.
And that's covered in our ethics, yes.
And if I may, Chair, to, to allow Attorney Powers to crosswalk that, because I believe it's also embedded in some of this language as well.
It is, yes. And, and I, and I would also indicate that this, this section, this policy is entitled "use of social media." If an employee or, you know, any staff wishes to know what the rules are on use of social media, I certainly would want to play hide the ball and make it, you know, appear that, yes, but we have an HR procedure that you didn't know about or weren't on notice of that says that you're only to post items that may be of public interest, but broadly and not specifically connected with your employment. The language, though, deleting this paragraph is a suggestion, and certainly to the board to determine which parts you wish to retain, if any, there may be, I submit some value in the paragraph that speaks to limitation, restriction to matters of general public interest that are not related to the employee's specific job duties and unrelated to the employee's job responsibilities, you know, matters where it's clear the individual's not posting in an official capacity, because it is not always a clear distinction when someone is using social media, that there is, that they're posting in their capacity as a, as a, you know, member of the public, as a private citizen, or I'm a representative of my school and, or representative of Marion County Public Schools, in which case, were we not monitoring, and I'm not, by monitoring, I don't, monitoring does not necessarily imply there's a person sitting in front of the computer with a bunch of video feeds at all times watching to see what Twitter post just popped up, but it can be a periodic monitoring as well. I think it would be highly negligent in today's society to, to not occasionally be taking a look at, or have it brought to our attention, that could be the, you know, the, the monitoring source, but where an employee or staff member may be making commentary regarding an item that we need to evaluate, whether it's a violation of federal, state, or local law, we need to evaluate whether it is in violation of, for example, FERPA and release of information. I know that even within political campaigns, sometimes images of our students may be, you know, taken and used, and those are things that we need to be very clear on, that we can't permit. So I would be reluctant to completely remove an indication from this policy to employees that there may be disciplinary results if their, if, if their postings violate some terms and conditions that we believe are appropriate and within the bounds of, of permissibility. And that would include violations of, violations of law, and of course, Facebook isn't going to care, or, or any other particular social media account, isn't going to care that there might be a particular subsection that's relevant only to public schools, it might have been violated by this thing, sure, when it comes to broad copyright law, they're gonna, they're gonna shut it down in a heartbeat. When it comes to, well, we believe that this conduct is violative of one of the 1,001 statutes from, you know, from the Florida statutes, as to employee conduct, I don't, I don't know that, that, that's, that's going to be a battle we're going to have to fight with social media to pull it down. And so I think the first indication would be to, to let the employees be on notice that, that their social media postings should be, they can govern their personal social media postings as they see fit, but when we have social media postings that are going to be reflective of our organization, there may be situations in which we wish to restrict what that is. Just as a private- Just as a private industry may wish to say, "No, I really don't want you posting details of the assembly line procedures in a GM plant." There may be proprietary information, there may be trade-protected information, there may be privacy concerns, there may be, you know, any number of things that are not appropriate for posting within, of company business to the public at large, and that's part of your contract as an employee with us. So just some thoughts for the board to consider.
Chair.
In alteration of this policy.
Ms. Thor, then, Mr. Browning.
Thank you. This whole thing is kind of fraught with peril, I think, about just, and it's happened so many times. People innocently, you know, school board members included, they're at schools, they're really happy to be around the kids, they post some pictures of themselves with kids, and one of those kids is under protective custody order, you know? So there's a huge safety factor when it comes to our students in remembering to use Facebook, you know, judiciously or any other social media. And, you know, Pandora is truly out of the box in this situation. I don't know that any of us can have any supposition of privacy at this point. And, you know, we have a code of ethics that we have to get renewed every single year, you know, for a reason. And I'm really glad you mentioned about professional conduct, because while alcohol may be perfectly legal, I'm not sure it's the best picture for the district, you know, for us to be seen on social media throwing back shots at the local pub. So that would just be, you know, one example. And you'd like to think that common sense would be more common. So this is going to be an area that we're probably going to continue to always struggle with in balancing First Amendment rights with professional code of conduct, with our ethics as elected officials. I was just looking at, you know, our governor's Facebook page, and comments are turned on, and some of the comments are very supportive and others are very, very negative. And according to what I know, it's not a good idea to delete the posts that are negative against you as a public official, because you have now opened yourself up, you know, to comment. So just some things like that. And the training is ongoing, and that's good, because this is an ever-shifting landscape. And if we think that these companies are going to be guarding our best interests, you know, I'm glad that there's still people that think that that's happening, but that's not me.
Mr. Browning.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Thor.
Well, the, yeah, I've got several notes here. The freedom of speech is fundamental. It's number one. I think comparing, in this discussion, comparing private companies to state, where our government, to state is an improper comparison, because state does maintain a certain level of control over the population, and to expand that, especially into a private company, like the vagueness of freedom of speech, wow. That could be interpreted in almost any direction. And I'll give you, I'll give an example. Facebook, I took offense at the Facebook image, it's called clickbait, that, you know, the picture that this company puts out. And on all my blogs, as I go out, I select the picture. Like, if it's going to be a function, I put that picture as the image that comes up. It's the frame that you select. For us, it was a very, I thought, very inappropriate, a very gawky look. Another student was in the background with, sitting in a way that the skirt was way up. It was just totally inappropriate, and I brought it forward. And the thought was, well, Facebook picks this. No, Facebook does not, and shouldn't, and that should not be out, and it should be pulled down immediately, simply because we're not a victim of that kind of thing. I also, and the vagueness of this kind of monitoring, I also, I think a week ago today, something like that, I got a call from three members here about hostile environment. Now, I have yet to get anything in writing about that particular issue, but I keep constantly getting phone calls from the newspaper. And the newspaper is quoting.
Mr. Browning, I don't think you really want to go there.
Well, I'm just saying, the vagueness of...
But please don't go there in this form. Please, respectfully, I'm asking, am I saying it right, Attorney? That we should not go there in this forum with that.
I'm saying, I get...
In being vague, I want to clarify that there's been no communication with the, among the board outside, and I think Mr. Browning, Mr. Campbell, everybody will agree, there's been no communication among a group of members of the board. So that's...
Okay. So the point is, I get these calls from the newspaper and quoting the board. So, you know, it becomes almost an impossible world when the vagueness, my point is, the vagueness of state-controlling, monitoring situations, not the same thing as Ford Motor Company. Let me just say that. It's, and then in private companies, newspaper brought up, Facebook brought up, that type of things. I'm just putting that out there. And so to set a policy under government, very, very dangerous situation. Thank you.
If I may, just one more time to reiterate, as a function of an employee of the government, you are subject to certain restrictions, privacy laws, different things like that, as an employee of the government. And you've chosen to work for the government, and this is a right-to-work state, we are still a right-to-work state, and that covers just about every, I mean, I understand that public employees handle a little bit differently, that they can have due process, et cetera. However, because of the laws that govern the state of Florida, we also, as an employer, have the ability to set forth policies and procedures for said employees that could include, if you're interpreting monitoring of social media comments as a reduction in freedom of speech, that procedurally, because they are employees, not because we're the government trying to monitor a parent or anything, but because they are an employee. We are the employer, and it's an employer-employee relationship, regardless of whether we're private, regardless of whether we're public. That's the relationship we're talking about here.
I think this kind of can go very far-reaching. This can go way out there. It has a lot of typicals.
I know.
Where are we leaning in and out? That's what I would like to know.
Yeah, this goes out there. When I'm listening to the conversation you guys are saying, having, and that we're in, and I'm even looking at the extension of this to people that volunteer for our district as well. So will deleting this paragraph clear up anything, truly clear up anything, or does it just make more gray area? Because I'm thinking it's just going to give us more gray.
I think it would, I would, may I suggest it would, this paragraph was written with a view to public comment on a district-sponsored site.
So this is for...
Where the district has the right to monitor and to control what is, not in a viewpoint-neutral way, but still, they have a right to monitor it. And it does not apply to generic posts on the Internet at all, where the district does not have that right to monitor. Now, Mr. Powers suggests some kind of guideline for employees and about making it clear that they're speaking as a member of the public or not as an employee, but that's not the subject of this paragraph. And so I think removing the paragraph would eliminate an ambiguity and a complication in the policy.
I would concur with Mr. Whitner's comment.
And doing exactly what now?
Yeah, I need to pull together, too. I didn't get the conclusion.
Delete the paragraph that begins "as such" and ends with "board-sponsored speech." That's highlighted in blue?
Yes.
Deleting it.
Delete it. Delete it. I concur.
Now, is that going, again, I'll ask the question one more time. Is that going to create more gray?
And I can't answer that one. I, I, I...
I think the lack of, the lack of any additional explanation there is purposeful, because it's not referring to, we don't have commentary, we don't have commentary turned on on district sites. So we, if anything, if we were going to add anything, not that we necessarily should, would simply be a policy. Of course, it could also be a procedure that indicates that we're not going to do, we're not going to have, create a public forum with comments turned on on these sites, or else we run into the need for that paragraph back. So by deleting that, I think the fact that it's there, and the fact that we've spent this time, valuable time, and it's necessary, but we've spent this amount of time discussing it and finding out how many threads can be pulled off of it, is indicative that it is something which is creating its own ambiguity and gray area by its presence there. So its absence, you know, I think then is probably less so.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
That's fine. We can remove it. But to your same point, Attorney Powers, with the time and attention that we have devoted to that paragraph, I do think that it warrants potential procedure or code of ethics or something. Not policy, not policy, but something to do with human resources, if possible.
And I should point out that employees already are, undergo training for, you know, use of communication and social media, and the do's and don'ts, and all those sort of things anyway, that are just valid, smart, and, you know, appropriate, without it being necessarily committed to, you know, policy overall. And as well as those employees to whom it is relevant, you know, specific ethics and professionalism training regarding the same. So, you know, ideally, if someone is not utilizing common sense when they're posting, and they're posting terrible things even on their personal sites, though we may not be specifically indicating in a policy that we are, you know, that we're controlling it, sometimes that reminder that we don't want to see photos of respected personnel tossing back shots in the local pub, for example, or, you know, having sites which I believe that the Department of Education has said, there's a statute on point regarding moral turpitude, or, you know, any of those sort of things, the training's a helpful reminder to people, just not wise. I mean, that's why many people choose not to have or not to utilize a personal Facebook-type account anyway. Sometimes it's smart.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Thor.
Yes, a great point, because I don't even know that the whole board is really aware of the different training opportunities that are offered. You know, they might not necessarily be required of us, but for us, for awareness purposes, I think it would be really good to communicate that out to board members, Dr. Gullett. I'm thinking about the cyberbullying, the awareness of not getting hacked, you know, when using district technology and sites. All of those things that our employees get, in many ways, would be relevant to us, to know and would be helpful.
To participate in as well.
Yes. Whether or not, you know, you get MIP points or whatever, that doesn't matter, it's the content.
Chair. Yes, or Mr. Browning?
Yes, and I like what I'm hearing in that regard from the attorney and Ms. Thor, the, and I believe that to be procedural. And it's simply Ms. Campbell's comments about employees. I think that that fits into a procedural handout, not a policy that is by the state or by the board, by the overall, because you just can't write something that big unless you're going to go way out and violate things you haven't even thought of. So, yes, I'm in full agreement at the level of employee handbook, just procedures. That's just the way it is. These are the criteria for being employed, and it's pretty simple. And that would apply to Ford Motor Company or any other organization. It just would. It's not a policy as to whether or not you can engage with some private company, regardless of who is seeing it or not seeing it. And we all go by the, say, the traffic laws. Now, if somebody is spinning donuts and they're constantly having a problem and there's a serious situation, certainly that would fly against professional etiquette, or, you know, you'd have to question the employment if there was some serious issues that were taking place on any law. So, yeah, I'm real good with that. I'm real, I'm good with, especially the attorney's suggestion of removing it and just moving on.
Awesome. Can we take a break?
Yes, I was going to ask. I don't have anything else in that section. Do you guys have anything else in that section? Perfect.
Let's take, it is 10:55. Let's come back at 11:05.
Thank you.
We will be doing a hard stop at 11:30. So we have, let's press forward as far as we can for the next few minutes, and then we will break for lunch at 11:30.
We're in the 9,000 section. This was just a point of clarification, really. Policy, oh, excuse me, not 9,000, 8,000. My apologies, 8,000. Page 905 for us. At the very top of the page, the policy is 8141. Just a point of clarification. This is on report, reporting of misconduct and parental notification of alleged misconduct. Just ensuring that this is something that we are currently doing, because I'm assuming this is statute-driven.
Which page?
The very top of page 905, again, policy 8141. This is if an employee were to have misconduct. It does say at the very top of 905 that within 30 days of the date that the district learns of the misconduct, that parental notification is made. And the way I read this was if we have an employee who sees multiple students, that all of those parents would be notified within 30 days of that misconduct reporting. And that would be irregardless of if an investigation was going on. I just, I wanted to, first of all, I'm assuming that this is statute-driven, and maybe that's a question to understand first. But this is the first sentence under parental notification of alleged misconduct. And just, it's just a point of clarification, really, because, I mean, fortunately, you know, I've never been in this situation as a parent, you know, and, but I, I am just curious as to how the district has been handling issues of alleged misconduct.
It's only, it's only notification to the parent of a student who was subjected to it or affected by it. So it wouldn't necessarily be everybody in the classroom.
Okay, okay.
You said it would not be everybody in the classroom?
It would not necessarily be. I don't know, in circumstances, but.
It could be.
It says with a student, so it, it doesn't say just of the student. It, it says, including misconduct that involves engaging in all of these activities with a student or any conduct that would result in disqualification from educator certification or employment as provided by the statute. The parent of a student who was subjected to or affected by such misconduct shall receive written notification. So that is the, that's assuming that we know all the students that were impacted?
And that's, that's.
That's.
During the 30-day period, I think you could determine that.
But it says affected by.
Okay.
And the affected by, when I'm, when I see affected by, that could be the classroom, that could be the school, that could be all the kids on the bus, that could be anybody.
Anybody who has seen the misconduct or who has been a part, witnessed to the misconduct or.
Impacted by the.
Impacted, affected.
Impacted by the disqualification of, of certification. It seems awfully broad, but.
I, I mean, it's just kind of a point of clarification.
I like your point of clarification.
That parents are, are being notified within 30 days.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I am seeking.
Go ahead.
Can, can you hear me? Okay, there I am. Seeking confirmation from Ms. Oliver. I would ask, though, if Attorney Powers could weigh in on that statute per se to guide the definition of the notification of, of impact, to your point, would be very helpful.
Mr. Whitmer, may I defer that to you to start, and then I will look into some.
Well, the legislature's been very active in this area, and they want these things to be, the districts can't just sweep it under the rug. And they have to. And they have to let the parents know and it's a timeline provided. So it's a requirement now in the law and this really, it's a whole new way of doing things from what it used to be.
Right. So just for clarification for us to ensure that, I'm, I mean, it's statute driven, so it should be in policy right now. But just to interpret if that is any student impacted in that classroom or impacted by that said instructor or administrator or if it's only the student with whom the known contact occurred. It, that, that's, that's just a really interesting area. I hadn't seen that parental notification, I think is incredibly important. I think that, you know, regardless of the investigation that the internally we may have ongoing, this is statute driven, but thirty days, we have to let parents know. Anyway, so.
Mike, Chair.
Yes, my, my question would be any conduct. Is that statute driven? It sounds, sounds too broad to be statute driven, that if someone is fired, that eliminates the, the previous sexual implications and goes into anything.
No, it's, it's not any conduct. I mean, it has to be a wrongdoing. It has to affect the health, safety, or welfare of a student. It includes misconduct that involves engaging in or soliciting sexual, romantic, lewd conduct with a student or anything that would result in disqualification from educator certification. That long list of all the code of ethics for the teachers. And sometimes these things happen in school, in a public sort of setting. I mean, where there would be people's, but a lot of times these things happen privately. Then nobody knows about it. The school would probably suspend the teacher when they find out about, you know, the allegation. And the other people really wouldn't be affected by it, I don't think, if they had never, but the thing is, of course, then the rumors get started and.
I get that. My, my question is, the, the area I need some clarification is, once we have comma, following comma, or any conduct, that's any conduct now, and I don't, that does not appear to be statute driven. Any conduct, that, that takes it out of the realm of any sexual situation.
If I may, Board Member Browning, it is any conduct that would result in the disqualification of their educator certificate.
Right, or.
So their certification.
Or employment.
Or, or employment as provided in that statute. So that statute would spell out those items. Yes, so that FS is Florida statute and that's a number.
That helps. Okay, that helps.
So this is not any person that is removed from employment.
That statute is a long list of offenses for which you have to be disqualified.
Okay, that, that helps. That's the clarification I need. Okay, thank you. Perfect.
So upon further information from Human Resources or what have you, then that would just be helpful for that. And we can move on if you guys want to go ahead and go on. That was my question on that one.
Do we want to move on? Okay. My next question is in policy eighty-four hundred. And this is on page nine thirty-four. Policy eighty-four hundred, page nine thirty-four. This is in relation to indoor environmental quality. And it does mention that the board recognizes that excessive moisture levels within schools. And I'm just curious to know how often we are, I know that we just did an extensive environmental study on the moisture levels in our district offices. But I'm assuming that we're also doing that in the schools as well. I'm just wanting to ensure that monitoring of indoor environmental quality is part of that, because that's what this policy would ensure that we're doing. I don't know if there is a policy we already have in place that monitors indoor, indoor air quality for our schools or not. But that was just in light of the pandemic that we've had and all the dialogue about indoor air quality. Just interested in how this policy pertains to that, because it does talk about the preventative measures and addressing water intrusion. All of those things, yes, we're definitely doing. But just making sure when we're talking about in, indoor environmental air quality in schools.
I, I, Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I, I agree wholeheartedly because we had, in that example, we had like forty year roof leaks that hadn't been looked at. And so, in structural situations with those covers on the windows that hadn't been dealt with, you know, for decades. And also HVAC faulty, I have expressed serious concerns in that area on new techniques, ionic, like ER OR, environment ionic HVAC systems that apparently are incredibly successful and need to be addressed, just need to be addressed. It's modern, it's just modern, modern world.
So it's just a point of clarification, really, is just, I see Dr. Gullett making notes.
Well, it does say point of clarification, I get you, but I mean, it goes back to the beginning of it, it states insecure environment on district property and district sponsored activities, so that I, I guess by putting district property, that includes all facilities, schools, or whatever under that, if, if I'm reading it correctly.
The very first paragraph, right.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's my understanding that each principal, as the leader of their building, the manager of the building, submits a report. I'm not sure if it's quarterly or yearly and also if there's an emergency item like the roof leaks after a big storm and you see mold on the tiles. But it is up to them to communicate those situations, probably to the superintendent, and then it goes down to our, our facilities and, and maintenance. We've always tried to prioritize our schools. And so it is unfortunate that our district building hadn't had a total rehab since nineteen sixty-seven. I believe we were told, and over the last few years, this particular board has been very proactive in getting those inspections done and making sure that our employees also get prioritized. So it would be helpful, Dr. Gullett, to get some clarification on the actual process. I'm glad to see that not only do we have this as, as part of our procedure that we're reviewing, but also the phasing out of banned products. You know, over the years, it has become very clear that there's products that are more healthy than others to be, you know, breathing in and exposed to.
Very important, very important, new, modern techniques, absolutely. And it's procedurally, it's, it's incredible how things can, can just go on and on and on, because we are, we do have an awful lot of property. And especially HVAC, we, we know we need to do things. We, you know, it's a, it becomes an economic issue. But it, this is, this is so incredibly important.
Chair, I may.
I have some information to share, thanks to Ms. Dobbins, who's following. So as to the HVAC system, when the filters are changed, then, which is routine, the HVAC system is inspected. And also there's an alarm system that's in place that's monitored from the district that monitors CO2 and other output functions. So that's some information to share thus far.
And the need for those humidity things, like for example, pulling the air, you know, that type of, it's, it's a realization of a problem. And pulling, pulling water off the carpet, for example, with a, with a dehumidifier would be, you know, complete violation of all this. So that's the kind of thing, I, I would just like to see it get, get handled, because you, you can literally, it can be life threatening, literally. So it has to be, this has to be strong, because you're, you're, by requirement of employment, you're in that position. And it's chronic, whether you have to then deal with sinus issues or whatever it is, can get much serio, more serious than that. And block mold, that type of thing. So I don't want to go on and on, but it's a very important area.
I'll never forget my days working in an internal classroom and teaching in there with absolutely no circulation at all. And I think that was the beginning of my sinus issues.
Probably was.
So if we're ready to move from that one, the next policy that I have questioned is, is just for potentially redaction of personal email and, and an address change, which is on policy eighty-four zero six. And this is page nine forty-two, page nine forty-two, policy eighty-four zero six. And perhaps this needs to be in policy written this way. But I am curious to know, first of all, if that in-person address is correct. And secondly, should we have an email address that is safety@marion.k twelve dot FL dot, having specific email address to Mr. McFadden? While I have no intention of seeing him leave that position, having that written in policy would require us to change it, should he not be in that position.
Yeah, we act, we actually have already discussed that when we were doing initial review. And it appears in several statutes, it might, I'm sorry, several policies, and we have cut it and made that alteration in other policies. I don't know why it didn't get made here.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll insert the appropriate email address and send it back for cleaning. I just.
And the address also, is that the correct address where to report in person? Maybe it is, but just.
Fifteen seventeen, yes, we'll check, but I believe so. Before we get too far.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was one before that one that I wanted to look at.
Yeah, all the safety stuff. I was relying on you.
Eighty-four oh five, I'm sorry. Yeah, eighty-four oh five, school safety and security. Page nine thirty-six.
Nine thirty-six, nine thirty-six.
Nine thirty-six, thank you.
Um, just, um, just making sure we have the right title. Where it says the superintendent conjunction with the school's safety specialist, is that the correct title for that part for Mr. McFadden? Other schools' safe.
Director of Safe Schools.
Director of Safe Schools.
Good catch.
If you're, if that's what your county calls it, that's the position, I think it's a statutory term, but.
Oh, okay.
That's a statutory term?
As such, by the, by the state. So there is a, correct, there are school safety, there, there is a, there's a person with Mr. McFadden's job title. But then for the purposes of also this section, there's a, the school safety specialist is a designee that is named by, in this case, Mr. McFadden, and then is submitted to the state. So we, that, that should be there. That's correct. The school safety specialist terminology. So. Because there, there is one, it's a designated title. It's not, or it's, it's a title, at least for the purposes, it's not a position necessarily. It's a, it is, it is the, like a diverse, diversity officer might be required in some contexts. That is a person who, their job title is not diversity officer, but it is someone who we have appointed to that position.
That person one in the same as our safe schools director?
I, I don't.
Or can it be someone?
I have to check with Mr. McFadden, but I believe actually in that case.
It is one in the same.
It. I, I, I'm not certain of that. I don't want to comment on that. I, I, I thought I remembered Mr. McFadden indicating to me that he had appointed.
Okay.
A person to fill that role, but it may be otherwise that he is one in the same.
So is that in the job description, sorry?
Go ahead, Mr. Whitmer. Yes, I, I do, I'd like to take the opportunity to bring out the safety officer, I, and public safety, school safety. It is appropriate, and I've brought this forward earlier, just out of, out of this context. That is a, I think, appropriate and, and safe school is a, is a statement of fact. And safety, school safety, like public safety, is a, is an ongoing duty. So there, there is a distinction. And I know it was used once in, at, in Tallahassee, and I think it got picked up. And I don't know, I don't know if it was really thought through when it was picked up as a safe school. That is a, that is a statement of condition as compared to an ongoing policy of school safety. It's very important, public safety, for example. It's not safe Florida, safe citizens, safe, because that states it, that it is a fact. And the ongoing need for school safety is very important. I, I was asking that that be brought up through procedural and get on the, on a, on a workshop agenda so that we could address it. It's, it's, it's very important in terms of perception.
If I may, so Mr. Browning, I'm understanding you don't like the, the terminology of office of safe schools. You own an office of school safety.
I, uh, school safety, yes, it's an ongoing obligation and procedure and, and process. That's what I'm looking for. It's like, it's like an office of public safety. That's what the deal, you, you do not have an office of safe citizens. You know, like, or a safe Florida. You, you have Florida public safety. And then you go on and you proceed and you work through that. So it's, 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 it's the English parts of speech that are at play there. And I think it's very important.
Under the Florida Department of Education, which is under the purview of Governor DeSantis, there is a division called the Office of Safe Schools. The Office of Safe Schools regulates what we do and the language that is used within all of those things. So while there may be a distinction between what is, that safe schools are responsible for school safety or whatever, everything referred to is referencing back to the Office of Safe Schools, which is a division of the Florida Department of Education, which is under the purview of the governor.
And the office, yeah, the office would be, it could be the Office of Safe Schools. That, that works.
And so when they appoint, when they, when they, when the Florida Department of Education gives us guidance indicating that we will have a, a person with a particular job title, or we will, they are giving a, an, a name to a particular piece of guidance or legislation or anything else, they use Office of Safe Schools or Safe Schools. School safety is used in some contexts, like for example, the school safety specialist. But otherwise, we just track the language that is recommended and used by the Office of Safe Schools. And otherwise, that would have to be things that the Florida Department of Education, Office of Safe Schools, the governor, they, they dictate. That's not an internal decision, I guess, is what I'm saying. It's not a decision we make to say, we're gonna, we're gonna change the language from this to that. It's.
Right. We've followed consistently downward, using safe schools. In fact, I think Mr. McFadden is the safe schools director. So we follow the language from Tallahassee down to the local.
I'm, this isn't right forum to, to actually bring it forward. I'd, I'd be happy to pursue it in Tallahassee and bring it back, bring back some thoughts on this. I'd be glad to do that. And that's, that was, it, it just came up, you know, and so I, that's why I brought it up now.
Yeah.
But sure, I'll, I'll be glad to.
Guys, it's eleven thirty-eight and we were supposed to stop eight minutes ago. So we're going to recess until twelve thirty-eight for our afternoon break. So we're going to recess until 12:38 for our afternoon break.
We're back on from lunch recess. We'll continue with our Neola policy review. The last policy that we were at was eighty four oh five, school safety and security. I think we had completed that one and we're moving on. So, who has the next one?
I don't know that I had, I have flags here, but it's on policy eighty four oh seven, page nine forty-four, actually. I have two flags, but I'm trying to figure out why. In reference to the school guardian, a district employee who is hired for the specific purpose of serving as a school guardian, do we currently have language in place in our policies about the guardian program? I'm not certain that we're doing the guardian program. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. It's definitely statute, but... I just had a question about that and then also about the superintendent notifying sheriff immediately after, but no later than seventy-two hours of the occurrence of a following. I don't know, those two things were the only things I was just kind of curious about from procedure standpoint.
I've kind of had questions with that as well, because it implies that the this school, uh, safe school officer is like law enforcement and... Well, they're paid by law enforcement and us? I guess I'm looking at that right and...
Which section are you referring to, Chair Cummings?
Eighty-four oh seven.
It's towards the end. It's, um... Yeah, I'm not sure which part specifically, but there's, um... The questions that I had were kind of in reference to the guardian and then the very end about the firing of a of an firearm discharge or misconduct or discipline of the safe school officer. Just with the seventy-two hour notification to the sheriff's office, I guess they have, they're, they're kind of duly... I mean, they work for the sheriff, but anyway, I just, this, this isn't my area very much. I just kind of flagged them just to ask questions.
It, it, it says commission school safety officers and it says they can be, be either a law enforcement aide, be employed by a law enforcement agency or the board. That I'm not, I'm not clear with that and I'm sure that's statute. But it's, there's an issue in here about, um, us notifying them, the sheriff's office, if that person is dismissed or discharged a firearm or all that kind of stuff like that, but doesn't say anything in reciprocal that the sheriff's office would notify us. Did you notice that?
I did, I did, Chair. Thank you. The last section, I read it the same way that you did and, and our, our safe school officer is employed by us, full-time, is our employee. And as for the school guardian program, we do have that program. We don't have any, have anyone hired specifically for those role, but as we've discussed as, as a team before, we do currently have that program.
Okay.
Okay. So, do we, do Neola policy have a... So, do we, do Neola policy have or put anything, has anything that says that the sheriff's office should be reporting back to us? If they, if this person is employed by the sheriff's office and not us, will they, I mean, right now, ours is employed by us.
Right.
Well, they can only be appointed if they meet certain qualifications. So, what, what do you mean by being reported on or what's a report?
That's what I think be encompassed within our school resource officer contracts and agreements.
Okay.
It's, okay.
So, if they were disciplined for another reason, then they would let us know, right?
And, and I remember some discussions specifically regarding that. So, that's within the school resource officer agreement and would have to be modified via that contract with the sheriff if we needed to modify it, but there is a reporting process so far. I'm not sure if it's the one we want, but that's a separate contract for us to review.
And for a point of clarification, a safe school officer is just our lone employee? And then the school resource officers fall under a different title that would not be classified under this safe school officer? Because if we were interpreting this safe school officer as every school resource officer, then that's the question of if they had misconduct or discipline matters, then how do we get that information? But I, I think if, under the interpretation, that the safe school officer is one lone person and that is our employee and unless we change that and make that person actually a contracted employee of the sheriff's department or other law enforcement agency, then this policy as written would be fine.
So, currently, we don't have safe school officers?
We have one lone safe school officer that is our director.
That's our director.
That's the school safety specialist.
School safety specialist by statute, yes. That's what the statute calls him, we call him something else.
Mm-mm.
I, I think because, because this doesn't apply to us currently, we have a safety specialist who is Mr. Singletary. By statute, we've already assigned that person. This person currently does not exist and we can't refer to, school resource officers are different, so it's, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I did not mean, I apologize. Under the statute one zero zero six point one two, it indicates safe school officers. That is a large group encompassing the following people. One, school resource officer. And it goes on to describe school resource officers. Two, school safety officer. A school district may commission one or more school safety officers for the protection and safety of school personnel, property and students within the school district. The district school superintendent may recommend, the district school board shall appoint one or more school safety officers. Then, three, school guardian. Four, school security guard, which we do not have. We do have a school guardian program under three, however, it is currently empty. You know, we don't, we haven't decided to take use of the training opportunities and go forward with, with that program, though we could initiate that at any time. So, there are different classes of, of people there and the school safety officer, it says the district may commission one or more school safety officers for protection and safety of school personnel. And under two B, it indicates a school safety officer has and shall exercise the power to make arrests for violation of law on district school board property and to arrest persons whether on or off such property who violate any law on such property, under the same conditions that deputy sheriffs are authorized to make arrests. A school safety officer has the authority to carry weapons when performing his or her official duties. That being the case, the only person we have who meets those qualifications is our, is one and that's by design and choice and that's Mr. McFadden. So, we have, we have one person who is a law enforcement officer essentially for the school board. And I guess the analogy that I've heard used is we do have a, we're authorized by statute to have a police force within the school board. We technically do, it is just a force of one because, and he's our chief and that, that allows him investigative access and sharing access that is necessary for us to have among other law enforcement agencies. Because in some cases, such sharing can only be conducted with other members of agency to agency. It can't be conducted with the agency of, say, the sheriff's office, sharing it with the school board if we didn't have this person or with another outside non-law enforcement agency.
Correct.
So, that's my understanding.
That's correct.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
How would you characterize the other individuals, like three, four, or five other individuals with Dennis McFadden? What is their, how would you characterize?
I used to know the answer to that. It's, those folks are school safety personnel, but I'm not sure what we, I'm not sure of their titles. I don't know that answer.
Okay. I think it'd be important to know. It, it sounds procedural to me. Once you have it, you have the capacity in policy and then the, rather than one, you have apparently, I think we have multiple. And, and do they have, and what powers do they have?
They don't have any law enforcement powers.
Okay.
They are, no, they don't have.
Safety support personnel.
Their support to Mr. McFadden and to SROs, but they have no law enforcement authority.
Even when they're previous law enforcement people?
Even though they're previous law enforcement, they have no law enforcement powers for our district.
Guardian program.
For our district.
Mr., I don't want to conduct it off the record. So, Mr. Attorney Whitmer is asking the question, do we have school guardians? We do have and have decided to retain open this lot to be able to utilize the school guardian program. But school guardian program are not employees who are employed for those purposes. The school guardian program would be any number of people within the district, as we determine, who would be, who would receive specific training and it could be, for example, an assistant principal or it could be a teacher. They receive a specific, rather prolonged, in fact, course of training over several months' time by and through the Marion County Sheriff's Office on responding to emergency situations. And their only role would be in response to those emergency situations, not as a routine monitor of the schools or as part of their normal job duties. It would be essentially responsive personnel in the event of a sort of almost first responder kind of emergency or situation. So, that's the school guardian folks. Now, we also have folks under the safe schools department, under Mr. McFadden, who are our employees, whose job is to work with and carry out the needs of the school safety department. Specifically, that's their job to do. They don't have other alternative duties other than that's, that's their primary assignment. But those folks are not certified necessarily, certified law enforcement officers. And if they are, they're not certified as a law, they may have a certification or hold a certification, but they're not employed as law enforcement personnel. The only law enforcement person that is employed as a, you know, as a law enforcement officer would be Mr. McFadden as our, as our chief. Mr. McFadden could probably further clarify that answer. I, I don't, it's an area of which I know a broad range of information, but not a deep range of information specifically.
So, Chair, if I may, the question I have relates back then to the notification of incidents because that currently speaks to our director, who is a full-time employee of our district. Is it required by statute that even though that is the case, that we will report that currently under our current structure? Is this statute-driven under those conditions?
Your question is, are we required to report what structure we have and what ones we use?
So, as it stands in language, and this is what I hear a few of the board members talking about, and I concur with that, this language requires that we report, we're responsible for notifying the sheriff immediately under these two occurrences, if they happen. They're dismissed for misconduct, so we would have to report that to the sheriff's office, even though they're our employee?
That was my question.
Right.
Mine too.
And perhaps that's, I was going to say, perhaps that's statute-driven because if we are without a safe schools officer because of the dismissal, then perhaps the sheriff becomes the ex, whatever, the ex officio, that's the word I wanted to use, but has to main or become the responsible party in the event that that occurs.
Thank you.
But, but I don't know what the discharge of a firearm has to do with that. So, if that's statute-driven.
That refers again to a school safety officer. The statute references that that notification requirement under five, five says, "The school district shall notify the county sheriff and the office of safe schools immediately, but no later than seventy-two hours after a safe school officer is dismissed for misconduct or is otherwise disciplined, a safe school officer discharges his or her firearm in the exercise of safe school officer's duties other than for training purposes." Okay? That's the notification requirement. Now, going back to the definition of safe school officer, remember I just mentioned, safe school officer is a person who has authority to make arrests, carry a firearm, things like that. We have one.
Right.
And so, that would be our director of safe schools, Mr. McFadden. So, we would be required, under this statute, to notify the county sheriff and the office of safe schools immediately after, but no later than seventy-two hours after. He's either, if he were to be dismissed for misconduct or is otherwise disciplined or discharges firearm other than for training purposes.
Okay.
Okay, if it's statute, it's statute.
I don't just mean he, I mean also anyone within that role.
Sure, of course. Then the very next policy? Response to resistance, the, right under the word discussion, it says the department. Doesn't say what department? So, this is on page nine forty-five. "The purpose of this procedure is to provide guidelines for the use of force by officers." The department cannot address, the very second line under the word discussion. We're on, sorry, eighty-four oh seven point zero one is the policy number, yep, at the top. Says purpose and then discussion at the very top, you are right at the top, very top. Discussion, the department. It doesn't reference what department?
Is this Marion County policy?
What's the, yeah, it's a Marion County policy, so, can you tell me what, is there any statutory reference there?
There's no statute listed. There's no statute listed.
I mean, it is a Marion policy, but it doesn't, there is a statute in deadly force, there's a statute listed there, but not in that, I mean, if this is a policy that we need, terrific, but if it's the safe schools department, then I want it to say the safe schools department, because right now it just says the department.
I would, I would suspect that this language was pulled out of statute because within statute typically whatever great large section it's referring to makes reference to the department, when you're talking about the Department of Finance or the Department of Education or whatever.
Sure.
And then it makes context, contextually throughout, it makes those, so here, you're correct. It's unclear to what department it is referring.
And it does reference officers, officers, officers. So, I think just a clarification of saying the safe schools department will get it taken care of, I believe, but I wouldn't like to have a policy that doesn't reference specifically the department we're talking about. I think this is all safe schools, I mean, I do. It does reference officers quite a bit and...
This is, and I have an issue with number three.
Okay.
But where it says department, I'm in agreement, I don't think it should say department. I don't think it should say something different other than department. But number three, number three just kind of blocks you in.
Oh, yeah.
Says we'll call a fire department, fire department rescue unit. Well, if you're in the county, I mean, we need to change that.
It says or other appropriate medical personnel.
Yeah.
So, maybe it could just say, we'll request the appropriate medical personnel, although that's different than the fire department.
Yeah, and is Mr. McFadden nearby so we can kind of get some clarity on, oh?
Mr. O'Shannon, we're talking about you.
That's good timing, Dennis.
And Chair, if I may, I inquired about not just eighty-four oh seven, but also eighty-four oh eight, which is next. They're both requests from safe schools to be included for your consideration, so I think it would be appropriate for Mr. McFadden.
Just for some clarity, Mr. McFadden, walk there. Safe school officer, Dennis, bring, bring, bring us up to speed with this safe school officer thing, please.
Very confusing, the way it was written. So, going back to the, I agree it should say something other than department, but you have to specify whether it is going to be the safe schools department because the statute itself or the response to resistance is basically the use of force policy. A lot of agencies are going to response to resistance rather than use of force. Same language within both statute, but after the George Floyd incident, federal guidelines, federal laws, a lot of state requirements that we have to do what they call no, no choco's unless it's for deadly use of force, to defend yourself from deadly use of force. And there are some requirements that you have to intervene in the event another officer is stepping outside of the lines of the use of force policy and procedures. So, there's some guidelines that's come down. The problem with this here particular policy is we're in a quandary really because we have a school board, police department, again, where I'm the only one that's sworn. However, that's what the policy is for, a police department. From a safe schools department standpoint, that policy is really not, does not apply because we're talking two different entities per se. So, we're kind of have to make a decision and I'll just be honest, which is very confusing to board members, to the general public, because we're trying to work off of two different departments. It's very hard to explain. To be hon, you either need to be the safe schools department, the police designation is great, but it's confusing because there are some things that we're limited as to what we can do and how we can do it because... do, and how we can do it, because there's requirements and statutes that, and policies that need to be in place for the police department, but not necessarily for the Safe Schools Department.
Right. So, Mr. McFadden, if I may, so would you say that this policy is currently in here in this response to resistance, is because of school districts that have full, fully-staffed departments, police departments within their school district, as opposed to our school resource officers that are employees of other law enforcement agencies, should be abiding by this, and it might not warrant the need to actually be in our policies?
Well, the school SROs, the SROs in the schools have their own department policies that they would abide by, and this language would be in that.
Okay.
This particular policy, just say, for instance, I'm at these school board meetings, what happens if I get involved?
Okay.
In a physical altercation, or had to use deadly force, then that is to cover my, the fact that I'm sworn, and in this capacity. So even though I'm the only one, there are certain policies within the law enforcement community that we should have, if we're going to maintain this designation.
Okay.
I'm having a little bit of trouble, Chair, a little bit of trouble hearing. I don't know, I don't even think you have to stay all the way back there, I think you could come up on the stage, but, and perhaps I could hear better, or maybe just adjusting the mic might work.
Test, test.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds better to me. While we're, while we're on the subject, when we, this goes back two or three years, maybe four years, but the sheriff's department, this is under the previous sheriff, and it's just hypothetical, but the, the use of school resources offices for the purpose of having police presence, this was in the advisory board to the sheriff's department, to the sheriff, would put all sorts of police presence on a, on a campus, on a, on a school campus, which was the idea of slowing down, or just retarding any, any external threats, just an awful lot of sworn officers coming, and it was also a revenue source of using a distributive offices for the, for the sheriff's department, and, and give them additional presence as a chief, you know, the constitutional law enforcement person for this, for the county. I bring this up, because we've got, that would be a third, if we expanded into that as a revenue source, and as a, as a source of additional police cars, presence, and show of Marion County Sheriff's Office on, on school campuses. So, and if you could blend that thing, that kind of expanded, because we're looking at a policy going forward, you know, how does it, how does it apply? I know we're talking about just one person right now, but I see it expanding beyond that. Is that making, making sense, in terms of the responsibility of reporting? Like, how far out are we getting into the sheriff's world?
I think we should, if we just, if we can stick to this particular policy, to try to get what we need, because right now, currently, Marion County Sheriff's Office, Ocala Police Department, Bellevue Police Department, doing a wonderful job on the campuses, I believe if they run into an issue or an incident on any of those campuses that relates to this statute and the policy, their departments will handle that. They will absolutely have in place use of force policies, all the policies that they need to address any issues with our SROs, if any arises on the campus, whether that's discharging of a firearm, any type of misconduct, all of that will be handled by those agencies. That's not something that I would get involved in. There is some requirements that I have to report to the state, if it happens, after it's reported to the sheriff and the superintendent. So their, their agencies have policies in place to address everything in statute.
Thank you, that helps me.
Dennis, well, Mr. McFadden, we kept looking at this thing, saying Safe Schools Officer, but you're not, you're not, and I think we kind of walked away from it, saying that you were the only Safe School Officer. You're not a Safe School Officer, because they're, from my understanding, they are in schools, correct?
Let me clarify this question. And make sure that we are talking on the same page there. Under the statute, Mr. McFadden, statute says, "Safe School Officers at each public school," and it goes on to subdivide that into School Resource Officer, School Safety Officer, which it defines as someone who has arrest powers and can wield a firearm, and then School Guardian, School Security Guard. Can you please, taking that information, give us some information about the job, the specific words used in the job titles, or descriptions, or designations, because I also know that there is a specialist, a position or appointment. Can you discuss that for a moment, and then we can ask questions if we have that?
Yes, sir. So just as Mr. Powers, Attorney Powers described, you have a school, school, I think, the School Security Officers, School Safety Officers, it's confusing if you don't read it all the time, but under the School Security Office, Officer umbrella, you've got four different ways to meet the mandate, to have basically an armed person on your school campus. That is through a School Resource Officer, which is through an outside agency, Marion County Sheriff's Office, Ocala Police Department, Bellevue Police Department, or any other agency, local law enforcement agency, that we choose to contract with, to place them in our schools. Then you have what they call School Safety Officers, they fall under the umbrella of the, of any school board police department. So if they are under, if they're sworn officers within the school board police department, they can be assigned to a school to fill that state mandated, state mandated role of having an armed person on campus.
Of that second group, how many people do we have?
Out of that second group, we have zero. We have no one hired under this designation to be in our schools.
Correct.
We contract with Marion County Sheriff's Office, Ocala Police Department, and Bellevue Police Department to fill those roles.
Okay, that's SROs, yeah, right, so SROs. Now, School Safety Officer, is that a designation that you have? Or no?
I wouldn't have that designation, because I'm not assigned to a school.
Correct.
For order for me to be a School Safety Officer...
Have to be at a school.
Based on the statute, that means I would be assigned to a school to meet the mandatory or the mandate to be on a school campus.
Correct. Understood. Okay, so you had two groups so far, you said there were four.
Okay. And then we have Guardians. Guardians can come in a various, various forms. We have Guardians, who are our current employees, who have been through extensive training through the Marion County Sheriff's Office. They are, they could be a principal, they could be an assistant principal, they could be a coach, they could be anyone that the school board designates, that selects a group of employees to meet, and go through the training at the sheriff's office, to meet the state mandated Guardian requirements. They are, in addition to our SROs, we have no standalone Guardians on our campuses. No standalone Guardians on our campus. And then the fourth one, if, which is the state just implemented over the last year and a half, or two years, is Security Officers. So you could technically contract with a local security firm, and hire security officers, armed security officers, to come into your schools and work.
Can you offer the...
My, I'm sorry, the folks who work for me, they have the title of School Safety Specialist. They are unarmed, non-sworn employees, who respond to the different schools, to help out with the school hardening projects, they assist with the fencing, the door buzzers, the cameras, the drills, but they are not armed.
And they have...
And they're non-sworn, they have no arrest powers, they have nothing.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, they have no arrests, they have, they have no police authority.
None.
At all.
And Mr. McFadden, in one of our previous policies that we were discussing, it talked about, the board shall approve, and the superintendent shall appoint, a School Safety Specialist, or the, it referred to the School Safety Specialist. Is there also a title given by the Office of Safe Schools to one contact individual within the Department of the School, Safe Schools Department?
Yes, and that is the School Safety Specialist. The School Safety Specialist is, is a, basically the state come down after the Marjory Stoneman-Douglas Act, and they stated that every school district will assign, a School Safety Specialist, will have a School Safety Specialist assigned to the district, or named by the district, so that the state can have one point of contact, to communicate with that person, whenever they need something like, the, how many SROs we have on campuses, how many schools do we have in our district. Any information that the state needs, they email that particular person, that School Safety Specialist, and he or she gathers the information, and sends it on to, to the state level. That way, they don't have to call multiple people throughout the district, to get things taken care of.
Sure.
And in our district, when we first initiated it, or when it was first initiated, I was that, that person, the School Safety Specialist. Since then, I have, I've pushed that role down to someone who works for me, with my, over my direction, under my direction, is Kenneth Singletary. And that had to be something that was sent to the state, his name, contact information. So they now contact him, and CC me on, on everything.
Okay, that was my question, like, but you are not the contact now?
I am not the contact from the state.
You're not the direct contact.
I'm not the direct contact from the state. But now, within the office, within the Department of Education, there is an Office of Safe Schools, and that has an executive director, someone who, per se, oversees the safety specialists for all the other districts, for all the districts in the state of Florida. The Office of Safe Schools, any mandates, any requests, any information they need, they push it down through, to the school, the safety specialists, to get their information.
And can you indicate to the board, Mr. McFadden, Mr. McFadden, can you indicate to the board why it is that we had decided to move, to designate another person as a School Safety Specialist, who is the contact person, as opposed to leaving it as you?
Well, as, as information start coming in, and the request was basically overwhelming, with me having other duties and other responsibilities, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't overwhelming for me to try to gather this information. Information that is not something that, that could be gathered in a timely manner, without me having to be responsible for that, with all the other stuff that I may have going on, in meetings, and different things. So this person, in addition to his, his other duties, he has the responsibility of responding to the state in a timely manner, getting information they needly, needed, because sometimes they need it in a short matter of time.
So that's, that's not just an emergency contact person, that's somebody that deals with a lot of routine, day-to-day requests, back and forth, and that would be something that would take away from your normal, sort of, executive-level duties, or higher-level duties?
Yes, sir. For instance, they have mandated us now, or requested, that anytime we, for instance, have a case where a weapon is found on campus, when a weapon is found on campus, I share that information, I provide that information to Dr. Gullett, our team, and they pass it on, or push it on to the board members, but he is responsible for notifying the Office of Safe Schools of that same information, because they keep track of all of these type of incidents as well.
Just to be clear, so it sounds like you're doing the school and district-level communication loop, and Mr. Singletary is doing the state communication?
Yes, ma'am, he pushes it up to the state.
Okay.
And we keep spreadsheets, they keep spreadsheets of everything, all the information we send them, and if we need it, need it later, go back later and ask them for information, they can provide it for us.
Now, there are two contexts in which I've heard the term specialist. One is that School Safety Specialist, which is Mr., is it Singletary?
Yes.
Okay. And then you also said that the employees of your department, what is, their title is?
School Security Specialist.
School, School Security Specialist.
And they're, and depending on what district, districts have different names for them, but that's the name we chose, based, probably based on another district.
Right.
Yeah, so back to the original question, do we need this policy in here, eighty-four oh seven point oh one, about response to resistance? And if so, how do we change the language that just currently says, "The Department"?
Could we say, "The Safe Schools Department"?
And let me, because Mr. McFadden can't see what we're looking at. The language here, Mr. McFadden, says, "The purpose of this procedure is to provide guidelines for the use of force by officers," and it says procedure, should that say policy, Mr. Attorney Whitmer?
It can be a procedure, well, policy would be...
All right. Then, under discussion, it says, "The Department cannot address every conceivable scenario with regard to incidents that can happen wherein the use of force by an officer is reasonable. Experience and training shall aid officers in their decision to employ force, and the type of force reasonable to overcome resistance. There are various options available, depending upon the circumstance of each incident. Officers must use sound judgment, in weighing the totality of circumstances, to select the proper response within the use of force." So, the first question is, it says, "The Department cannot address every conceivable scenario with regard to incidents that can happen wherein the use of force is reasonable." Is that sentence necessary at all? Should we change it to, "The Safe Schools Department cannot address..."
Or the district.
Or the board cannot address...
Can we say, "The District's Safe Schools Department"? Because he's the, you're the director of our district's Safe School Department, correct?
So, in my professional opinion, and this is just my opinion here, again, we, I'll do whatever the board needs, or the district needs, if we're talking about this policy, my folks under Safe Schools would not be...
Subjected.
Subjected to this policy, because they're not sworn officers.
Correct.
So therefore, if you're gonna keep the policy, the policy has to be kept because of my role, as a sworn law enforcement officer, so if you're going to have the policy, you can't put it up under Safe Schools Department, because now it is saying that the people that's hired under me, who is non-sworn, has to abide, or have to be subjected to this policy. So the policy would need to either, it has to be what the designation is, which is the school board police department.
Gotcha.
I, I, you can't...
We do have.
Well, he's the only employee.
One, one employee.
We do.
We were saying Department, okay.
So it'd be the Marion County School Board Department cannot address.
Department of one.
That's what it should say, "The Marion County School Board Police Department cannot address every conceivable..."
Correct. And I mean, obviously, if I got in a situation, God forbid, where I had to use some type of force, then we would, just like most agencies, they would allow an outside agency to investigate my actions.
Correct.
If anyone has any objection to the proper language there, so that we aren't subdividing it too much, should probably be the district.
Yeah.
The district cannot address every conceivable scenario, because this is a district policy.
That's true, that's true. Because the board, it falls... Because the board, it falls upon the district.
Right, just the district.
Yeah. So I would propose that unless someone sees a good reason to do otherwise.
I agree.
Just the district, why not the district School Board Department, let's go on.
Well, the district encompass, encompasses, I think, pretty much all of us, but the, the idea here is we're not saying somebody's given a responsibility here, uh, we're simply saying, I mean, we could just as easily say, "Every conceivable scenario with regard to the use of force by an officer is reasonable" cannot, uh, cannot be addressed, and just leave the, the, the subject part of the sentence completely out, and just the verb.
I like that better.
But, um, okay, or we could say, "The district cannot address." So if we want to say, "The district cannot address," we can do that. Otherwise, I would say, "Every," it started with a capital E, "on every conceivable scenario," run that sentence all the way down past reasonable, and then say, uh, "Cannot be addressed."
I, I like every, I like starting with the every versus department or the district.
Okay.
The district would be, because the department, police department, falls upon the district.
So, um, going with every or going with district?
Superintendent, do you feel like weighing in?
Thank you, I, I agree, I think it, you don't need to say the district, later it references district property, and it's all under the same umbrella, so I think it's just.
Okay, so what, the way that we have altered it now is to read, under discussion, "Every conceivable scenario with regard to incidents that can happen wherein the use of force by an officer is reasonable, cannot be addressed." "Experience and training shall aid," and it continues on just as it says there.
Yep, works for me.
And because district is down in it, it implies the district anyway.
Right.
Yes, thank you, it's a policy, it's.
Yes, yes. So that covers it.
Sounds good.
And do we leave Ocala Fire Department Rescue Unit?
No.
I don't think so.
You see, I don't think you saw that one, Dennis.
Oh, right.
By appropriate medical personnel.
And I'll, I'll ask Mr. McFadden, because there may be a reason why that is there. Mr. McFadden, and sorry to put you on the spot here, but there's also a section under three that says, "Any member using lethal or less lethal weapons, as outlined in this policy, as soon as the circumstances permit, uh, request the Ocala Fire Department Rescue Unit, or other appropriate medical personnel, to respond, examine, and if reasonable, treat persons involved." Is that, uh, should, should that remain with Ocala Fire Department Rescue Unit? Is there some reason for that, or is that, or should we just simply say, "Appropriate medical personnel"?
Yeah, you can say appropriate medical personnel, because there are times when.
Then what I would say is, there's two alterations we need to make to this sentence. First, any member using less lethal, or, uh, do we want to say any member, any, any?
You know, the, the member could be a guardian, who wouldn't be an officer.
Okay, so really, it's referring to any member of the Safe Schools Department, I guess. All right, any member using lethal or less lethal weapons, as outlined in this policy, will, as soon as circumstances permit, uh, request, and that's a split infinitive, it should say, "Policy," uh, "As outlined in this policy, will request, comma, as soon as circumstances permit" the appropriate medical personnel to respond, examine, and if reasonable, treat persons involved.
Yep.
No parentheses.
Yes, that's.
Correct, no parentheses.
No parentheses.
Yep, that's.
I like that.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Sure does.
Works for me.
Because this, the way it is now confines it to just Ocala.
Right.
Yeah, um, we, we have several, several places within our county that are municipalities. Thank you. Dennis, there was something about this, um, these chokeholds you mentioned earlier. Can you, Mr. Mc, I'm sorry, Mr. McFadden, there was something you mentioned about these chokeholds. What was it that you mentioned?
Is it on? Okay, there's been language added to pretty much every law enforcement agency across the country, barring or prohibiting the use of chokeholds in the, unless it is a, uh, time of deadly force. In other words, if I can, um, I could use a chokehold if I feel as though my life or the life of someone else was in danger, similar to using a firearm. If I feel as though there is a threat of great bodily harm or death to someone, then I could use a chokehold to, to defend myself from great bodily harm or death.
And that is under C eight within this proposed policy. It says, "This agency prohibits the use of chokeholds, a physical maneuver that restricts an individual's ability to breathe for the purposes of incapacitation, except in those situations where the use of deadly force is allowed by law."
Yes, so, a- again, it's just something that needs to be addressed in there. All of our local agencies, I'm quite sure, has put some type of language like that in their policies to prevent it from happening, uh, when there's no threat of deadly force.
Were, were chokeholds barred? I thought they were barred by these agencies, local agencies.
Well, they are, under C eight, and it's saying we're prohibiting the use of chokeholds, but there are two.
I thought they were barred for any reason.
Two, no, two factors there. First of all, in order to be a chokehold, it is done for the purpose of restricting an individual's ability to breathe. It's not the same as necessarily, necessarily a headlock or something like that, though that would be a different consideration. But secondly, in, except in those situations where the use of deadly force is allowed by law. So, it would be foolish to say, okay, well, you could, you're in a situation that's bad enough that you could use a firearm in a deadly manner, but you can't use a chokehold. So, if the situation warrants, there's a, 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 an armed struggle on the ground, and somebody can't get to their weapon fast enough.
Can you choke them?
In that case, if lethal forth is, uh, force is authorized, really, that's any force.
Right.
Including a chokehold, including something that might otherwise be a procedure that we would not want people to do. Eye gouging, you know, whatever, I mean, whatever you can think of that's terrible. If use of lethal forces is, is permitted, then literally nearly anything in order to accomplish
Anything goes.
That is permitted.
Pretty much anything goes.
Right. No holds barred, I believe is the term.
No holds barred, that's it. Yes, ma'am.
Dare I ask, it here, thank you. Sorry to, I'm gonna take us back to the top for clarity purposes, if I could. Under purpose, because this is a Marion County proposal, not a Neola one, under purpose, it says, "The purpose of this proceed," oh, it needs to say, "policy," "is to provide guidance for the use of force by officers." As it stands, and according to statute, have we clearly defined officers? Based on everything we just discussed.
Right, and does that cover guardians?
Because if I pick up this policy, and I'm not part of this discussion, because officers describe a lot of.
Shall we say, "Safe school officers," because that's the term statute uses. One thousand six point twelve, "Safe school officers at each public school." So if we say, "The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by safe school officers."
As defined by?
As defined, well, I'll actually have to see what the definition section. But safe school officers, under those that are supposed to be at each public school, it gives that, that sub list breakdown. But let me go back to one thousand six point, it should be oh oh one.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. Just wanna make sure that we're clear, because that could be loosely defined.
And just remember, our policies don't
Right.
do, do not affect the SROs on campus, because they're not our employees.
Precisely why this is critically important.
Yep.
Yeah, these other individuals.
They're officers, but not by this definition, that's why I think we need to be clear.
But, but in that case, you know, Mr. McFadden, in his title of Director of Safe Schools would be really the only person to whom this would apply at this current time, right?
Yes.
So is there, I, I believe what the superintendent's asking, and it's a valid, very valid question, is, uh, is the terminology that we use for, "The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force" by whom? Do we want to say, I mean, uh, specifically, the Director of Safe Schools? Or that seems a little overly limiting, even though that's true. Is there a broader cla, a group or class within which we should be defining? Or should we be leaving off, deleting, and saying, "The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by district employees?" Or I think that's probably too broad, because it might imply that other district employees are authorized to use force in any.
And throughout the policy, you refer to officers, so I think that needs to be defined at the top.
But if this response to resistance is not intended to apply to other alternative situations by other personnel within the district, it's only intended to apply to a, to our Safe Schools Department, then there does need to be some, you know, designation of either a particular individual, I would, not a particular individual, but a particular job, role, duty, or title, or to reference by the department. Because I presume that this is not intended to address, uh, instructional personnel in a restraint type situation, we have separate procedures and policies for that, right?
Right.
And, and, and there's, they're very specific.
Very specific, and we have our own training, correct.
Ken, I, I need to, for us to do a, a brief recess, very, very brief recess. Um, and Ms. Campbell has some things that she needs to get with you about attorney powers.
Yes.
And then we'll come back on, okay?
Yes.
Let's recess for about five, six minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's recess, hold on, hold on. Okay, we're back from recess. All right, the superintendent and attorney were, they were in the middle of a question, so I'll get clarity on that. Attorney.
So, thank you, Chair. Question is about defining officers as it relates to the purpose for 8407.01. So that when it's referenced, we're really, we have a clear understanding as per statute and per policy what, who the officers refer to.
And I would ask whether, when under purpose, if we said the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by, if we were to broaden it, well, we can't say, could we say employees of the safe schools department? And leave it broader, or do we need to designate? Because I'm afraid that if we designate right now a particular job title, that may expand later. For example, if the school guardian program becomes active, or if we hired another individual or multiple individuals to whom this would apply. So, but we do want to make it clear, this is not referring to ESE personnel. Because this, this use of force and response to resistance is not, is not intended to be subplanting anything, or supplanting anything that those policies speak to. So, and I'll appreciate if Mr. McFadden can weigh in and any opinion he has on this, but the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by, my suggestion is the safe school, or by employees of the safe schools department? Or do we need to be more specific than that? Because in that case, SROs are not our employees.
Right.
However, there are employees who are not authorized, I think, even to this response to resistance, right?
Correct.
How do we target that and narrow it down?
It's difficult because I have four people that are usually here. And I can tell you that if some irate individual came into this boardroom or work session and tried to physically attack anyone, they would, from their past experiences and their knowledge, they would use some type of force, whether it's grabbing the person, detaining them, restraining them in some kind of way, they would absolutely do that. But they're not sworn, so they're not, they can't be referred to as officers. They're not the officers that we're talking about within this policy. Because they're not sworn unless, again, there's some type of distinction that can be used to separate them specifically in this policy, but.
So this policy is intended to address the use of force by, would it be appropriate to say, safe school officers, even though we only have one? Are school resource officers safe school officers? I thought we said, did I just get that wrong?
They, they are. Safe school, school resource officers are safe school officers.
Yes.
Under the big umbrella, yes, they are.
Oh, right, 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 okay. So, right, so, okay, so that encompasses too broad a group. Safe school officers encompasses too broad a group.
Right.
School resource officer is not what we want to designate because they're separately controlled. School safety officer, which at this point, Mr. McFadden, is you and you alone, right?
Yeah, that's it.
So, we could say the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by school safety officers, even though there's only one. At this point, there may be more in the future. And that would eliminate, because let me, let me clarify to make sure that my understanding is correct. An SRO is not a school safety officer. They're a safe schools, a safe school officer under the statute. But within statute, it talks about safe school officers at each public school. Safe school officers, that exact terminology encompasses a number of people. School guardians, SROs, safe school officers. Now, school safety officer, as of right now, is one person.
Right.
And in the future, maybe more than one person. That person is employed by the district, has arrest powers, may carry a weapon, affect arrest, things like that.
You can actually say safe school officers because technically, when guardians engage in a situation where they have to abate, what they call it, you know, engage an active assailant, they are safe school officers.
Right, but they're not a school safety officer.
Could apply to them. In other words, they'll take on that role of a guardian rather than a principal, assistant principal, and they could potentially fall upon this policy because they are safe school officers.
Okay, well, that complicates things.
That complicates things.
So we would, we would run into the position then where a safe schools, the, the broad class of safe school officers, that's a broad class, not school safety officer, which is a unique one-person class. Safe school officers, we want this policy to apply to all safe school officers except SROs, right?
Yes, because they're not.
So we want this to apply to guardians, if they are any in the future?
We got guardians now.
To your employees? Yes or no?
Say that, repeat that question?
Do we want this policy to be applicable to your employees?
I'm.
The school of security.
I have to say no because they're not in that sworn status.
Okay, well, guardians would not be either, right?
Yes, because they, they're not sworn, but they're armed.
Okay.
Armed, and they could very well use deadly force in a situation, if a situation arises.
May I suggest that if that situation were to arise, that we develop 847.02, response to resistance by guardians or whatever?
Unarmed, security, what do you call them? Safe school security officer?
Because as of right now, I think that if this statute is, as Mr. McFadden indicates, I'm sorry, this policy is necessary, then it is really intended only to target and address, at this point, the school safety officer, which is you. Then we specify the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by school safety officers. In case you got a, an assistant who had exactly your same credentialing, okay? And was also, you know, arrest powers and everything else, which isn't anticipated, but could happen. Now, then, in the event that we are going to implement a guardian program, or in the event that there is any other armed personnel, in conjunction with creating that position, I would suggest that the board at that time should adopt a policy which addresses those unique considerations to that class of people. Would that be any input on that idea?
I thought, Chair?
Yes.
Yes, what Dennis said, specifically, he was addressing the, the need for deadly, when deadly force was in play, the need to interrupt or stop that, and his people would step forward. And, and so would individuals here, military training or whatever, armed or unarmed.
Right, and I think that might almost be a, it's not an anticipated use of force. However, I know that in a self-defense sort of context, or a defense of others sort of context.
Exactly.
If someone were to break into my office causing threat, I may well step in to protect my paralegal, my secretary, whatever. And I may use what force I deem necessarily reasonably individually under the law.
Correct.
As would anyone in that, a teacher or anyone else may exercise that.
We had a situation right now with someone, and I could see it from this angle.
Somebody jumps the stage and comes running up for, running up for you, Mr. Browning, I'm probably going to put myself between them if I can. That's just the way, and you might do the same for me, so.
Exactly.
But that's, the purpose of this policy is to address the armed individual who is our safe schools, I'm sorry, school safety officer. And the reason for it is because we're required to have this policy for a person who is essentially, has arrest powers and is a employee of the district and who is carrying a firearm. Am I stating that correctly?
Yes.
So this policy, we're not putting this policy in because we necessarily see an overwhelming need for this policy for this, to clarify his role, but because it's required of us, that in order for his role to exist here.
One person.
At that one person, for him, him as a law enforcement officer, who is going to have arrest powers and, and carry a firearm, we have to have a policy in place for his purposes and for.
And his assistants, or myself, or the Reverend, that notwithstanding, all these things would come into play.
Right.
And they would in a deadly situation. However, this is what we're addressing.
Right, and so with it being targeted in that direction, and please feel free to, everyone put input, I'm just trying to emcee this a little bit. I believe that we would, that our proper language, if that's our intent, should be, back at the top, that the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by school safety officers. And then, as to the superintendent's point, school safety officers, we need a definition. And I'm looking here, because we've been throwing around what that means, and I think we all understand what that means. Under 1006.12, section two, it says, "School safety officer, a school district may commission one or more school safety officers for the protection and safety of school personnel, property, and students within the school district. School district, school superintendent may recommend, and district school board may appoint, one or more school safety officers." It indicates that they may, they shall undergo criminal background checks, drug testing, and be law enforcement officers, as defined in 943, certified under the provisions of 943, and employed by either a law enforcement agency or by the district school board. So if the officer is employed by the district school board, the district school board is the employing agency for the purposes of 943, that law enforcement require, that we want a law enforcement agency certification, and must comply with the provisions of this chapter, which include having a policy of this nature. So, and it does specifically outline that a school safety officer has and shall exercise the power to make arrests for violations of law on district school board property, and to arrest persons whether on or off property who violate any law on such property under the same conditions that deputy sheriffs are authorized to make arrests, and has authority to carry weapons while performing his or her official duties. So those are all descriptive factors, but it is not a concise definition. And I believe we can define it within the bylaws and let this policy lay to rest with the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the use of force by school safety officers. So in that case, I will look to, tonight, after we're done here, I will look to definitions regarding statutory and also through the Office of Safe Schools that concisely define what a school safety officer is, so that we don't have to inject four paragraphs of descriptive language into our policy.
Excellent.
Is that acceptable?
I'm good.
So, we go with, the purpose of this procedure is to provide guidelines for the use of force by school safety officers, and we've made the edit right here. And then everything else about that policy, we have reviewed and determined we're okay with, except the, what's that? Let's make sure about, okay, we're making sure about guardian, hold on. No, okay. So, that should suffice, and then I will. So, that should suffice, and then I will write a proposed definition that is statutorily based, or based on guidance from the Office of Safe Schools, of school safety officer, and bring that back for review tomorrow.
Excellent.
Thank you. Mr. McFadden?
Yes, sir.
Everything good with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McFadden.
No, I'm, I'm here waiting to make sure I don't, I'm not needed for nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Everybody good?
I'm good.
Superintendent?
Yes, sir, thank you.
That was a long drawn out one.
Thank you.
Yes, we want to make sure I felt covered on that one. Okay.
Uh, if we're prepared to move on, I can, Ms. Campbell did identify the sections that she wished to, to bring for discussion.
Go ahead.
So, I will start with, uh, 84.0, 8410.01. That's page 951. Critical Incident Response, 8410.01, page 951. Section she has underlined indicates, uh, the last paragraph. Superintendent shall develop administrative procedures for responding to a critical incident event situation, which includes developing a prevention plan. And, uh, she just wanted us to discuss and comment whether we have such things in place, and, uh, the procedures and prevention plan that is referenced here, is that something that we need to, to, we, I think it's just something we need to bring up and, and discuss if we need to.
I don't think so, I don't think we.
Specifically, procedures and prevention plan. So, the policy is saying superintendent shall do those, so that's something that we'll, I think she just wanted to.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's, the ALIS protocol is, I think.
Yes, that's in place.
That's in place, too.
Right.
And that's gonna be somewhere, it's in another one of these, yes.
Correct.
All right, and anyone interject if we've got any other policies between the ones that I'm gonna, gonna move on with? Going to 8420. 8420, that's page 955. Emergency Management, Emergency Preparedness, and Emergency Response Agencies. Under the third paragraph, says pursuant to Policy 8405, School Safety and Security, the superintendent, in conjunction with the school safety specialist, she's outlined that, or underlined that, shall develop and revise as necessary a school safety plan to provide for the safety and welfare of the students and staff.
And that's going back to the prior.
Right.
Discussion.
So, school safety specialist, this person then would be the person that Mr. McFadden just had indicated is specifically.
Mr. Secretary.
The school safety specialist, as designated by the state.
Right, so that does stay.
Okay. So, no, no change needed at this point, but if anyone had any comment on that?
Nope.
Uh, 8431. That is page 958. And that is Preparedness for Toxic Hazard and Asbestos Hazard, Policy 8431. And this is, under Toxic Hazards, the second paragraph. The superintendent will appoint an employee to serve as the Toxic Hazard Preparedness, THP Officer. And the question is, do we have that? And if not yet, that will be something that, because this policy is giving the directive that the superintendent will appoint that person, that will need to happen, and of course, within the context of job descriptions and everything else, that may sort of create a little bit of a work for superintendent to do.
So, that's one we need clarification on, superintendent's checking on that one.
I'm checking.
We can keep going.
We have one already, and if not, looks like we have to.
Right, good concise way to put it.
And, uh, Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, if, uh, am I correct in assuming that this, this designation could go to a current employee?
It would be to our.
To a current employee?
Yeah, or added into their job description, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, added, added to it, okay, thank you, thank you, I'm good.
Thank you. We keep going.
What an interesting title, the Toxic Hazard Preparedness Officer.
I want to see their uniform.
Right, yeah. It's like Space Force, sort of thing.
Yeah.
Uh, next that is outlined is, uh, 8442, Reporting Accidents. That's on page 960, 8442. Uh, and this is just speaking to the form on the third paragraph. It indicates the injured employee, visitor, or staff member responsible for an injured student shall complete a form that includes the following information, the date, time, place, et cetera. We don't have that designated specifically by form number or anything like that, it just says "a form" that has the following information, so.
So, would there be a form number that we would have in there?
I can't remember.
If we have such a form already in existence, it probably has a number.
Yeah.
I would think, like, an incident form or?
Yeah, it's an accident form.
Yeah.
And I can't remember what the number is, but, yeah.
And is that form standard across the district?
Yes.
Regardless of school?
Yes.
Department, whatever?
Right, because if you get referred to workers' comp, workers' comp is always very standardized.
Okay.
And I can have that pulled, cleaned, and, and, and just moved forwards, if that's the only edit. If I can get, um, if I can request, um, Dr. Gullett, if you can just get somebody to send me or Terry an indication of who, or what form that is. I'm sorry.
We want to listen.
Forms are all numbered according to the policy that they're attached to. So, this would be Form F18442. If there were a second form.
Okay.
It'd be F2.
So, we'll put the form number in keeping with a standard Neola protocol, and then if we already have an existing form, we'll just put that form number on the existing form. Does that make sense?
The Neola number?
Right, so, but for consistency throughout the Neola policies, forms are numbered by a Neola number that references the policy.
Okay.
So, we'll put the form number, make sure we pull that for, for doing so. We'll put the form number that is gonna be consistent with the Neola policy, and then we will let this, along with probably 20 other times that a form is referenced within the policies, we will make sure that those forms, which we already have in existence, are sort of bait stamped or have something with.
Updated to reflect the policy forms referenced.
Right.
Rather than the opposite.
Right, okay.
Or new creations, too.
So, the next item, if anyone doesn't have anything prior to section 8500, which is Food Service Program.
What's that?
Uh, I'm sorry, that's page 974. Food Service Program, 8500. Um, there's a lot of statutory references, a lot of people have control over, uh, with federal and state, over food services programs. And then, on, in the book, it's page three, but the paragraph would be the first, second, third, fourth paragraph. Uh, she just wanted to bring it to our attention that, uh, this may be what we've been sort of colloquially referencing as a dirty dozen sort of paragraph. And so, she just wanted to bring it to the attention of our Neola representatives that if we, we had, we had come up with some alterations in previous language of what our desired characteristics are for all those pregnancy, age, religion, military status, et cetera, this is another one where that will need to be inserted if we haven't done so already.
Where you, um, Attorney Potts?
I'm sorry, this is the paragraph, uh, in your book, it's on page 976. And it says, "The Board does not discriminate on the basis of."
I got you, I see it.
Okay.
Right. And we had previously outlined what our sort of standard phrasing is going to be.
Right, so that's an insert.
And we just need to make sure that that's inserted if we have not already done so.
Okay.
Next, and for school board members' reference, it's on page four of five of this, uh, page 977. And that is, uh, oh, I think she just intended me to do this. Uh, "In addition to students, lunches sold by the school may be purchased by staff members and community residents in accordance with administrative guidelines." So, there should just be a "by" between purchase and staff.
So, that was an.
Sorry, that was one that she was probably gonna send directly to me.
Okay.
This is, uh, Policy 8500. And then Terry, at the very end, it says, "See also AP 8500A," and we just needed to delete that language. Um, moving to page 980, and this is Policy 8510 Wellness, 8510, page 979. Under section B, subheading one, Physical Education, and small letter C, the word Spark. Elementary physical education teachers shall be encouraged to provide instruction utilizing the Spark curriculum, which emphasizes maximum participation for students. Her question was, is that, uh, something which appears in statute? Does it need to be further outlined or defined here? Is it a program that we have, are using, stopped using? What's the current basis of that?
Yeah.
I would say that's probably antiquated. And Chair, if I may, I, I will have to double check, I don't think that is referenced in statute, but would have to double check. Hope is, but I'm not sure about Spark.
And, uh, given that it's referenced within the policy here, it may be something that we, we don't use, we don't use anymore, or maybe it's required, who knows, I don't know. So, if I could request that someone just, uh, update us, we'll make the change to that, move on from it if there's.
Yeah.
We can either delete utilizing the Spark curriculum.
Well, it was never mandated anyway, according to the language, it says "shall" and then "be encouraged."
Right.
How does that even look like?
And I don't.
Right.
And so, perhaps, we just need to make an executive decision right now to get rid of section C altogether, if that's, unless you want to do further research into it. Since there's no teeth to that section anyway, it simply says, "Elementary physical education teachers shall be encouraged to provide instruction utilizing that curriculum."
I'd like to know what Spark is before I delete it.
Okay, and also, we could probably satisfy the same requirement by saying, "Elementary physical education teachers shall be encouraged to provide instruction utilizing a curriculum which emphasizes maximum participation for students." But.
So, Chair, if I may. I'd be inclined to shorten it further, say, "Elementary physical education teachers, shall emphasize maximum participation for students."
I.
Because that's what we want, we don't want kids sitting, doing nothing.
Regardless of how we get there, which, which specific curriculum we might be encouraging.
Yeah.
Superintendent?
My, thank you, Chair. My question about this is, um, Neola recommendations on language, because as we get more detailed, uh, in terms of curriculum, um, curricula changes. And so, then you come back for a policy revision, is there a way to look at the language that defines it more broadly and anchors it back to the statute?
Right, and this one was one that we would, that would have, I don't know if this is one that we did during our executive sessions in which we discussed this one, I don't recall it.
I don't either.
So, this may have been one that was reviewed and cleaned by a prior administration, which did specifically outline Spark, but I don't think this was Neola's specific suggested language, but I don't know.
I don't see it in the template.
Okay, so this is something that was placed in there by Marion County Public Schools, whether it was via a previous administration?
I think so.
Or, or not, but.
I don't recall that we discussed it either. And so, and I see a lot of things that are very procedure-based, and again, very, very anchored to current guidelines, and I would just think that this might be something that has to come back constantly for policy review, I would rather it be kept simple.
Sure.
In procedure.
And in procedure.
Yes, I support that.
Okay, uh, now, do we mean, now, this entire policy on Wellness 8510, do we want to, what do we want to do? Do we want, or do, do we want to just on item, on that item B1C that we're discussing now, shorten it as proposed by Ms. Thrower? Or do we want to just pull this, and real quickly before tomorrow, try to come up with a reduction into what we're gonna use for procedure, as opposed to?
It references a lot of statute, so I don't know that we need to pull it so much that I think it needs to speak to just to the statute. So, that's why I was asking if Neola has a current recommendation.
Oh, oh, I understand.
Right on this, so that it speaks, is grounded just in statute.
So, perhaps restart with the template and move, and move from there.
Perhaps, I think that would be the most appropriate way to proceed.
So, um, can you, uh, Mr., or Attorney Whitmer, do you have the, uh, the proposed template?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Almost all of these are options in the template, select some, or all, or none. So, the Spark thing was one that was added in, but there may be other things that were added in, too. I haven't compared, compared them.
So, this is something that in order to alter it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a list of choices we still need to make, which will require some discussion.
Right.
We distribute it through the template.
Okay.
That would be helpful, if we could see the template, and then we can.
So, we're going to, we're going to distribute that template to all of you tomorrow.
Correct.
And, uh, we will see if we can check through the list. Uh, we've seen those on other policies, where there's a template that says, "Choose A or B from this menu," essentially, and then we will, we'll do that. We'll choose among those, and, and perhaps, uh, might suggest that whatever personnel we have that are knowledgeable of our current curricular practices on that in this particular area of, of wellness, nutritional education, physical activity, they might be able to help us make those decisions of what we do currently to make it fit what choices we're gonna put within the policy.
And I'd like to just add, the, uh, the superintendent be guided heavily by your recommendation on current and future.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Flexibility.
Thank you.
The next, um, underlined item that we have in this policy, uh, and just again, it's probably something we're gonna look at, but, um, would be under paragraph, under section C, number one. "The schools shall provide, uh, at lunch, at least 25 minutes daily for students to eat." And she had a question mark beside that. I, I don't know if that means, should we, are we currently doing that?
Yeah, I thought lunches were 20 minutes.
Time specifically, right. Um, and then, under item six, "The schools may use environmentally friendly practices, such as the use of locally grown foods and non-disposable dishes," which I, she's indicated that she doesn't believe that we do have non-disposable dishes that are used currently, it's all disposable, so.
Well, it does say "may."
"May," right. So, at any point, these will all, if we're pulling this and using, and selecting from templates, this is something that we will be able to discuss more tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
And again, procedurally, yeah.
Uh, something we probably can, with, from this section, discuss now, that would be helpful and save us some time tomorrow, would be under, um, section G, which says, "Rewarding Children," that paragraph begins with "rewarding children." "Rewarding children in the classroom should not involve candy and other foods that can undermine children's diets and health and reinforce unhealthy eating habits. A wide variety of alternative rewards can be used to provide positive reinforcement for children's behavior and academic performance." So, I guess the questions are, number one, is this something we want in policy? So I guess the questions are, number one, is this something we want in policy? And question number two is, should it be stronger, if so, then should not? Are we going to...
And who's going to police that?
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, I'd just like to introduce the idea of the script, I know it's used, I've seen the script, where they can earn those Bellevue, Bellevue dollars, whatever they're called.
Eagle bucks.
What is it?
Eagle bucks.
Eagle bucks, so, so eagle bucks, then, then we have to police what their eagle bucks are spent for and what have you, so I'd like to have that be procedural, you set it, it's set, the principal operates under your guidance, and that's the way it is.
And plus, reinforcement's individualized anyway.
Yes.
You know, you can keep the candy, as far as I'm concerned, I'll take the steak.
Yes, if that makes sense, because all those are motivational and they're multi-level.
Right.
And some are teaching currency and teaching reward and responsibility.
And some are part of behavior intervention planning.
And sort of plans and age-related items, correct, thank you.
All right, and so, again, since this policy's coming up tomorrow, I think it's decisions we can make at that time, but I just wanted to reference what her comments, or what her, what underlined she had there.
General policy, very specific, uh, uh, freedom of procedure.
I'll be moving on unless somebody has something before policy eighty-six-hundred.
Page?
Okay, hearing none, eighty-six-hundred, transportation.
What page?
This is page nine-eight-seven. Transportation, policy eighty-six-hundred. Section, there are two, looks like two, maybe three, hang on, sections she has out, underlined, and the first is the third paragraph. "Students living more than two miles from their home school will be eligible for district-provided school bus, bus transportation." But within the second sentence says, "Students who attend school out of their home school zone will not be eligible for district-provided transportation." I believe we had a conversation about this during a board meeting. Perhaps we should say "may not be eligible," because in fact, there are situations in which some students are provided district-provided transportation, and we wouldn't want our policy...
Yeah, because we have those hubs, hub routes.
Right, right.
And I don't think we had those then.
We wouldn't want our policy to prohibit the practice that we are doing.
True.
So, that could probably, though it's not, it's not always ideal, could be prohibited, it could be fixed by simply changing the will to a "may," if no one has an objection to that.
How does it impact the Stanton-Weersdale and the walk-in zone and those issues?
It doesn't?
It doesn't.
In this case, it's saying...
Living two miles.
No, that, but that's not the point of the policy, this is students living more than two miles from their home school, and it says...
Okay, I got it, got it.
"Students who attend school out of their home school zone may not be eligible for district-provided transportation."
Got it, yes, I'm good.
So, if a student, you know, lives outside the school zone, that's all.
May not, or may?
Got it.
Everybody okay with just changing that to "may"?
Yes, I just wanted to, to comment on Board Member Browning's question, that the hazardous walk-in conditions are part of the statute and part of this policy as well.
Right. Thank you. Page nine-eight-eight, same policy. Under the section heading Duties and Responsibilities of the Principal, E and F. She's had a note here, the note says, "Work with transportation. Develop a plan for the supervision of transported students who arrive early or remain late," that's E, and F, designate places for students to get on and off school buses at the school site, and provide supervision of the loading-unloading zone. And I regret that I don't, I don't recall what specific... Concern, oh, she, okay, she said she was working with transportation on this, but, E and F, "Develop a plan for the supervision of transported students who arrive early or remain late, and designate places for students to get on and off school buses at the school site."
And that's the responsibility of the principal, I don't see a problem with that.
That's correct. And those are, for the record, those are expectations, that should be, those processes and procedures should be in place.
All right.
Yeah, because we've been doing bus duty forever.
We're required to provide appropriate supervision.
Yeah.
Eighty-six-hundred point oh-four, this is page nine-ninety-one. I, I, I think this is probably an executive decision I can make, but, uh, under applicants, says, "At the time of initial employment, the board will require the operator of a school bus meet the following requirements," it says "shall require," um, she indicates, and I believe she's correct, that it should, will is the proper usage there instead of "shall."
Eighty-six-hundred point oh-four.
We're editing it here unless anyone has any objection to that.
I'm good.
Under applicants, second paragraph. That, is there one more? That's all. That, that's all that, all that she has within the eight thousands. And all that I can think to bring up here, so if anyone has any other items from previous to hers or after those, um, then that would be the remainder of our discussion for today.
I do not.
I just wanted to make sure, since we changed, um, the requirement of needing a high school diploma, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't mentioned in here, and it's not. Thankfully, it, just to address minimum qualifications is maybe required by federal, state, state board rule, board policy, and we changed our board policy, so we're good. That's all I had.
Okay, um, we have a number of items tomorrow. Mr. Whitner, do you want to address what, I'll address my portion, what we'll be doing tomorrow, but anything specific that...
Yeah, um, one of the things, you know, we had a board workshop early on, um, and I think three of the board members now were on the board then, on the bylaws. Made really good progress, um, but since then, Neola has issued various updates to those bylaws. Some of the ones are just slight changes, some of them are fairly substantial, some of them are new bylaws. So what I would like to do is collect those and present them to you, um, tomorrow, we can do that tomorrow, um, and you can just see the changes and react to the changes if you'd like. We'll do it on Friday. Yeah, and then there, there's also a few policies that we wanted to pull for, uh, that have been revised, like the wellness policy and the eighty-eight-hundred, um, I don't remember what we said, eighty-eight-hundred was, uh, patriotic ceremonies, about the moment of silence, bring that to you tomorrow, also.
And I, I know that we had indicated that, uh, if we were able to complete everything tomorrow, then Friday, we would, it would obviate the need for us to do anything more on Friday. We do have quite a bit just from pulled policies and discussion items, and these are, each one of these are ones that did warrant enough discussion at the time that the proposed edits and the research in them is going to take some time to complete. So, we may not be able to complete all of that and go through bylaws and do everything within the course of tomorrow, but we, if you can have, Attorney Whitner, if you, Whitmer, if you can have the, um, the bylaws, bylaw things, items ready for us tomorrow, we, we could probably lead with those? And then move into the pulled policies and address those, and then wherever we leave off, we leave off, and if there are a couple that we need to stop on, we can begin on Friday. Is that suitable?
So tomorrow's surrounding bylaws and pulled policies?
Yeah, bylaws and anything we haven't finished to date or that we pulled separately and are bringing back.
Okay.
So for the next two days, we're just kind of cleaning up everything?
Right.
Except for the bylaws, that's...
Right, and a number of these are, as I said, the, the difficult ones, so...
Okay. Board members?
We take over, and we complete tomorrow a overflow.
And we will, we will send you a... We will also prepare and send a list of all of the policies that have been pulled so that we, you know, they're on everybody's page, they'll be in here, but what's in here, remember, is the printed text that hasn't been edited or anything.
Right.
And then we'll, you know, we'll be making changes to those policies as per private, previous discussions.
About how many are there?
Pulled for review?
Yeah.
There are quite a few.
Because I missed the first one.
Thirty, about thirty-five? And then any additional that you have to bring as well?
Nine bylaws.
And then nine bylaws.
I've listed all the ones that we wanted to update, it's just providing the time to get them all updated, really, yes.
So we're going to need both days, probably.
It's lightly, but we'll, we will get through a large portion at least tomorrow, if not the entirety.
Listen, I don't have a problem with that.
Good project to have completed.
Mr. Brown, you got any comments before we go?
No, sir, I'm good.
Ms. Thoron?
I'm good.
Attorney Power?
Thank you for today.
I do not have anything further beyond what I've said so far.
Just, thank you, Chair, very briefly, just a few items of clarification and information, that's all. So you asked a question about job description for the state certification for the fire inspector, it is already in the job description. The report, the question was about the misconduct, the reporting to the parent, if it, if it impacted a student or students, and that process is already in place, we already do that notification. And the last one was the toxic, toxic hazard preparedness for that job description is not, and that will be added to the job description. But we do have somebody appointed, it's just not in the job description. Thank you.
Can I become the assistant toxic hazard preparedness?
Nicole, you have anything, Nicole? Well, I want to thank Mr. Whitmer and the team for coming, Neola team for coming, Terry for being here with us today, and, um, if we have anything else, if we have nothing more, we're going to adjourn, um, I thought somebody said, okay, we're going to adjourn at two-thirty-three, and we will come back tomorrow at nine o'clock.